Alhamdulillah, Rabbil alamin, ar-rahmanir rahim. Maliki yom al-din. Iyaaka ta'budu wa iyaaka nastain. Ehlinas sira'tal mustaqim. Sira'tal ladina an'amta alaihim wa iri mawkubi alaihim wal 'ad. Rabbana zalmna anfusana wa illam tagfilna. Watarhamna lannakunannan min al-khaasireen. Allahumma wa'tikna lima tuhbhu wa tarrahum. Allahumma jaa al-a'malan haza. Hadihi mubarakatana min andika ya rabbil alamin. Rabbana atinabit duniya hasana. Wabil akhiratih hasana tawakkina adhab al-nar. Walhamdulillah, Rabbil alamin.
Majority Leader.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Speaker, since we only suspended the session yesterday, I am moving for the amendment of the Order of Business to include the... On the second stage of bills, I move to amend the Order of Business to include in the second stage of bills, BTA Parliament Bill Number 48, entitled an act creating the Bangsa Moro Development Corporation, defining its powers and functions, providing funds therefore and for other purposes. And also BTA Parliament Bill Number 49, entitled an act creating the Energy Development Corporation of the Bangsa Moro, defining its powers and functions, providing funds therefore and for other purposes, so that the... So that the proponent of this particular bills, Mister Speaker, can deliver his sponsorship speech on the second stage, so that we can refer it to the appropriate committee, Mister Speaker. So I move, Mister Speaker.
So there is a motion to amend the Order of Business, as stated. Is there any second? Jules accounted, is there any objection? There he being none, same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, may we respectfully recognize MP Edward Guerra, the proponent to deliver the sponsorship speech on that particular bill, Mister Speaker, on the general objective of this bills, Mister Speaker.
This is the sponsorship speech. First stage.
Yes, second stage, Mister Speaker.
Second stage, sponsorships. Okay, may we ask Minister, MP Minister Ed Guerra, please to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Thank you. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. To my courtesy and respect, to the Speaker, MP Nabilton, my fellow members of this Parliament, ladies and gentlemen, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. After studying various government-owned and controlled corporations, GOCs, I present before this august body, BTA Bill Number 48 and 49. These bills are for the creation of GOCs, which have distinct personalities and can be imbued with powers that existing ministries, offices or agencies do not have. BTA number... BTA Bill Number 48 creates the Energy Development Corporation, which shall be a taxable extract corporation. It shall be created for the primary purpose of undertaking development of energy sources utilization with the Liguasan, Mars and Sulusi in mind and as well as the Lanao Lake. For the longest time, many of you have been hearing about the potentials of Liguasan, Mars and the Sulusi. We need to have a concrete action to realize the dreams and hopes of our brothers and sisters whose lives shall Insha'Allah be changed for the better when these natural resources are explored. The Energy Development Corporation will enable us to top experts and expedite the exploration. GOCs can be bested with the power to enter into joint ventures, both with domestic and foreign entities. While line agencies or ministries are confined within their mandates, mainly policymaking and regulation. Let us enable ourselves to have unrestricted and efficient route in our economy through the exercise of Article 13, Section 10 of the Organic Law. Further, with this bill, we will be prepared for the executive order which the President of the Philippines, Rodrigo Roado Terti, has agreed to issue and personalize the full authority to explore and exploit natural resources within the Bangsa Moro region. Allow me to share the story, inside the story. When we visited or have a meeting with the President in Malacanyang, with the Chief Minister and some selected members of the Cabinet, we requested to the President to issue ng executive order for the Bangsa Moro government to lead the exploration of the Liguasan, Mars. Kasi nasabiyo eh, it is 50/50 management, co-management. So we propose that we should lead the exploration by providing the executive order. Ang sabi ni President eh, oh, dala niyo 'yung executive order? Kayipirmaan ko na ngayon. And so happen na hindi namin dala. Pero ang suggestion ni President, while doing the executive order, pero mas maganda, ikuwan na lang sa Congress para permanent. Maganda ang implementation. Kung executive order, baka mapalitan siya, mapagong President eh, baka maiba ang direction ng implementation. So, uh... After that, we submitted the draft of executive order for him to sign, pero hanggang ngayon, wala pa. Baka siguro legally pinag-aralan pa nila. But nevertheless, we'll try to follow up. With this bill, Insha'Allah, baka mapamadali 'yung issuance ng executive bill para reading-ready na tayo para sa exploration ng matagal ng pinag-usapan na Liguasan, Mars and Sulusi. The BTA Bill Number 49, on the other hand, creates the Bangsa Moro Development Corporation. 'Yung isa, 48, Bill Number 48 is for Energy Development Corporation. Itong Number 49, BTA Bill Number 49, is for Bangsa Moro Development Corporation. This GOC will be the likes of the National Development Company, which the leading state-owned enterprise that focus on or invest into different diverse industry. Itong kapariyo ng National Development Company, Natural Resources Development Corporation and the Southern Philippine Development Authority, SPD. It will engage in commercial, industrial, mining, agricultural and other enterprises, which may be necessary or contributory to the economic development of the Bangsa Moro. We have so much idle land and our territories have access to bodies of water which can be mechanized for food security. We can explore the option of consolidating the ownership of the land to entice investors and provide for means to have equitable share in the income in production. Relative to this, in a meeting with Secretary Dominguez, when I'm still in the Ministry of Finance, he suggested that the closed plantation in Boldon and Talayan was discussed. He encouraged us, this administration, to take over and express his support in terms of funding. So what can be done? Hindi naman direct na pwedeng pumasok sa plantation 'yung gobyerno. So we need this GOC to join ventures with some investors. These two bills are in line with the 12-point agenda of the Office of the Chief Minister. They will further the economic potential of the Bangsa Moro through maximizing partnership with the private sector or potential investors. Even with the black run, there is a need to enhance the implo of private capital and broaden the ownership base for investment to finance our development initiatives. The best way, the best way to pursue the implo of private capital is to ensure fair and non-discriminatory treatment of public and private sector entities in the process of development. This is where this GOC comes in and have a vital role. This GOC will be strong, independent body and system that will ensure consumer protection and enhance the competitive operation in investment market while minimizing the financial risk of... financial risk exposure of the Bangsa Moro government. As they pursue the mandates embodied in this act, we will be able to generate jobs for our people and eventually improve their economic status and of course, with dignity. We are proud people with a distinct culture. We should continually pursue initiatives that will bring the dignity of our people which they deserves. Alhamdulillah. The Bangsa Moro is blessed. It has natural resources that can be explored, utilized and developed. We are all living witnesses of how we waste resources by allowing idleness. It shall be... It shall be a shame if we continue to allow to deeper development in our time. So let us start now, not later. We need these vehicles to bring us where we want to be and it is within the express powers of the Bangsa Moro government under Articles 5, Section 2 to create these GOCs. I, along with my co-authors, we urge and passionately appeal for the immediate passage of this bill. So grand, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Mister Speaker, may I be recognized?
Mister Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to refer this... Yes, I move to refer this to, uh... Committee on Natural Resources and Committee on Environment, Natural Resources and Energy, Mister Speaker.
Before I refer that to the committee, may I be privileged to... To be co-author of these two bills? My name does not appear and I am part of the Committee on Environment. I believe in the objective in the bills, if the principal author will allow. Will the principal author allow?
Yes, yes.
Mister Speaker, may I be recognized?
May I be privileged to be co-author of these two bills?
Most welcome sir, as well as MP Jalonto, MP Musa and MP Dr. Saprola. Most welcome, acceptance sir.
Yes, including...
MP Seema, MP Saliga, MP Sakar, sorry dida. Ayoki, sorry dida, your name. MP Sattar? Ah? Muja? And MP Ujahid.
Secretary, take note.
I think, uh... Thank you, I think all members, all members of this Parliament is most welcome to be part of this bill. As co-author. I think, I recognize that all. I think most of their hand raised up because this is timely that we should begin the approval of this bill. For our people is long been waiting to explore our natural resources. I think everybody is most welcome and, uh... Excited for the bill to be passed.
Included as co-author, not only welcome.
Co-author, co-author, all the members. Thank you, thank you very much, my co-members of the Parliament. Thank you for your enthusiasm to be part as co-author of this bill. Thank you, thank you very much.
Let BTA, thank you. Let BTA Numbers 48 and 49 be referred to the Committee on Environment and...
Natural Resources and Energy.
Natural Resources and Energy, last na isang committee lang?
Yes, yes.
Mister Speaker?
Mister Speaker. Yes.
What is pressure is that, Amir Mawalin?
Mister Speaker, just a point of inquiry, Mister Speaker. Yesterday, we said that, uh... I do not object the manifestation of my fellow colleagues, but I would just like to clarify so that the record will not indicate conflict because yesterday, we said that the manifestation for co-authorship will be during the first stage of the first reading. So just to be clear that we are now allowing on the second stage, second reading of the...
Yes, Mister Speaker.
Just to be clear, because yesterday, the record puts that, uh... That the first reading will be the period where we allow for co-authorship.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, I would like to, uh...
Mister Speaker.
Yes.
And dale lang po.
Yes, MP Musolini, Mister Speaker.
Is that...
Uh, thank you, uh...
Mr. Musolini, Lidaasan. MP Lidaasan, Mister Speaker.
Is that in relation to what Amir was saying? Is... What is the answer to Amir Mawalin, Majority Leader?
Yes, Mister Speaker, I agree with the manifestation of MP Mawalin. For as long as the bill has not been referred to the appropriate committee, you can still have the chance to be a co-author of the...
I think the authorship, my piece of, uh... Thought, uh, co-authorship can come in from the first stage. Thank you very much, Amir.
MP...
MP Musolini Lidaasan. Where are you?
I'm here, Mister Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Assalamualaikum. Thank you, Mister Speaker. Um, I'm also a co-author of those two bills. In fact, in my recent meeting with the Chief Minister, he requested the Parliament to certify. I don't know, he rather certified this bill as an urgent bill. So kailangan po nating mag-double time sa bill na 'yan and I do hope he could pass it, um... Sa madali, mabilis na panahon. Mister Speaker, I would also would like to manifest na hindi lang po sa Ministry of Environment and Energy, but also maybe we could include, uh, 'yung Committee ng Investment because as of yesterday, we also divided the Committee on Trade, Investment and Tourism. So meron na tayong trade and investment. So in a way, this is also related to development programs and initiatives in the Bangsa Moro. So I think it would be best also if we can have two committees, refer these two committees rather than just one.
Yes, Mister Speaker, I agree with the manifestation of MP Lidaasan. So therefore, Mister Speaker, I move to refer this to the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources and Energy and as well as Committee on Trade, Investment and Tourism, Mister Speaker.
Is there no need for the inclusion also of the Minister, the Committee on Finance?
Yes, Mister Speaker, for the budget, Mister Speaker. Committee on Finance, as well as the Committee on Finance, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion, uh... There any second? Jules accounted for the referral of these two bills, 48 and 49, BTA Bills Number 48 and 49, to the Committee on Energy, Environment, Natural Resources and Energy, to the Committee on Trade, Industry and Investment and the Committee on Finance. Is there any objection? Say here's none, same is hereby approved. Next.
Yes, Mister Speaker, we proceed to the business for the day. We are on proposed Resolution 391, entitled Resolution Respectfully Requesting the Regional the Relift of the Bangsa Monotonomous Region in Muslim Indanao to conduct Ulama Consultation Conference purposely to discuss matters concerning the 2021 Ramadan Moon sighting and come up with a unified declaration for the starting of the day of fasting. So I move, Mister Speaker, to open the period of debate and interrogation. May we respectfully recognize MP Ujahid as the principal proponent of this bill, Mister Speaker.
MP Ujahid, this recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker, thank you, Majority Leader. Um, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, alhamdulillah. Salaatu wassalamu ala rasulillah. Um... This proposed resolution, Mister Speaker, um... As stated in the verices, is necessary for us to, uh... Come up with a unified declaration in the start of Ramadan and to realize this, Mister Speaker. Um, there must be a caucus meeting among our Ulama leaders or religious leaders in the region, amongst particularly the five provinces of Barm. Since that, Mister Speaker, um... Especially so in the island provinces, we have a traditional mufti being appointed by, uh... Region 9, if I am not mistaken, Mister Speaker. So from Tawitawi to Sulu to Basilan, um... They had their own mufti and they... The people is always adhering to the, uh... Calling and, uh... Uh... Fatwa of this traditional mufti, Mister Speaker. Therefore, Mister Speaker, as experienced in the past years, Mister Speaker, before Ramadan, uh... Coming, we always conduct the Ulama Conference inviting all our muftis, particularly from the five provinces and as well as from Sanbuanga City and the mufti of Zampe, Zampe and Palawan and also the mufti of Dabau and Jensen. And we invite, Mister Speaker, other Muslim communities, leaders from different cities of the country such as Palawan, uh... There was always a simultaneous or synchronized declaration and with the, um... Consultation or conference being done or being undertaken by the Ulama. Uh... So don po, nakikita po natin, nakaron po tayo po the past years, synchronization of the declaration of the month of Ramadan. Uh... Dahil we designated vocal version for every city. Uh... At nagkaroon din po ng reports yan sa bawat ng sulok ng hindi lang bang po sa Bangsa Moro area kundi sa buong Pilipinas. Uh... Kaya nga, Mister Speaker, even the embassy of the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia, they always in coordination with the Darul Ifta, Regional Darul Ifta and even the Office of the DILG and OPAP, they also have always usually have in communication with the Office of the Regional Darul Ifta asking if the Ramadan is bound to be declared. Uh... As being practiced, Mister Speaker, ang ginawa, nagawa po natin nun, kung magkaroon po tayo ng vocal version, kung hindi po natin nakita, ang buwan ng Ramadan, sa saan man sulok ng ating, uh... Banasa or kaya city, hinintay din po natin ang reports ng mga neighboring countries po natin. Kaya nga, kinakailangan talaga magkaroon muna ng consensus meeting ang mga Ulama natin because there is really a difference among our scholars, particularly between the Jumurul Ulama or the Majumman. particularly between the Jumur Ulama or the majority of our scholars and Imam Shafi'i. Yung tungkol po sa uh yung tinawag na uh uh yung uh the same sunset and and sunrise such as the neighboring countries for uh in uh uh neighboring countries like Malaysia, Indonesia, Philippines, and even Singapore. Uh so yun po ang pinag-isahan po natin noon, Mr. Speaker, uh yung sa mga middle east po na hindi po natin na pwedeng masulot nun sa umpisa dahil medyo malayo po sila, ang difference po natin about five to six hours. Kung hihintay po natin ang Saudi Arabia, yung declaration for instance, ang Saudi Arabia medyo mabigat po sa taon natin dahil it's about two A, two AM bago po natin marinig ang declaration of Saudi Arabia, for instance. So kinakailangan po muna magkaroon ang mga Ulama po natin ng decision tungkol po dito, uh at dahil magkaroon din po talaga ng synchronized na uh reports ang mga vocal version po natin sa mga uh bawat na city uh at mga provinsya ng ating po uh region at saka rin sa buong Pilipinas. So yun po, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh since that the coming Ramadan is now about approaching, tentatively, the moon sighting will be on eleven of uh February. Pero yung sa Malaysia, Mr. Speaker, magkaroon ng nagchinek po natin, medyo may pinakaibahan po. Meron po ang moon sighting nila possible sa twelve, meron yung sa eleven. So isa po yun sa mga dapat, na kinakailangan sa mga Ulama po natin magkaroon sila ng consensus or the kaya decision. Kay nga, kinakailangan yung itong uh Regional Darul Ifta po natin to spearhead the conduct of consultation meeting among with the uh different Ulama leaders and Muftis of our different provinces and cities, Mr. Speaker. So yun po lang ang paliwanag ko po, Mr. Speaker, that's why I hope that this resolution will be uh passed uh uh outrightly, Mr. Speaker, dahil wala na po tayong oras sa mga Ulama po natin.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, may we respectfully recognize. Mr. Speaker, I move to close the period of.
Before I uh.
I move to close the period.
Before I uh, before we close the period of interpellation, may I? Is is it uh okay if I want to associate myself with the resolution?
Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
Uh will the principal author accept?
Also.
Yes. Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
I accept.
I move to close the period of debate and interpellation, Mr. Speaker.
So you are now closing the period of interpellation?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, yes.
There is now a motion to close the period of interpellation.
But, Mr. Speaker, may we also.
What is the pleasure of the Deputy Minority Leader, Engineer Bayntan?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We would like also to manifest our co-authorship to the proposed resolution. Uh we second the motion of closing the period of interpellation.
Yes, may we request the other members of the parliament who would like to be co-authors to approach the Secretary General to update this, Mr. Speaker. Yes.
Okay, already noted. All those who want to be co-author of this resolution, submit your name to the Secretary General. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move to for the approval of a BTA resolution.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, before the approval, um just minor amendment, Mr. Speaker, just to preserve the integrity of the.
What is the minor amendment?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of amendments.
We now open the period of amendments. Uh what is the pleasure of the Deputy Minority Leader, Engineer Bayntan?
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, if try to look at the title of the resolution, um it says that uh we are respectfully requesting a unit within us, uh within the Bangsa Moro government. Mr. Speaker, just to preserve the integrity of the parliament, Mr. Speaker, I would like to propose to change the word "resolution" uh requiring Regional Darul Ifta rather than request respectfully requesting them, Mr. Speaker, just to preserve the integrity of the the directing the uh Regional Darul Ifta, Mr. Speaker, not respectfully requesting.
May I just ask a question from the proposed uh proponent of the amendment? Uh may I be educated whether the Regional Darul Ifta is a government agency? Is that a government agency or is that part of our religious uh groups uh hierarchy?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, it is a government agency. As a matter of fact, Mr. Speaker, it is under the Administrative Code and under the Chief, uh the Office of the Chief Minister.
Thank you very much. So therefore, uh is there, what is the pleasure of the principal author? What is your?
I I accept the the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, the amend, proposed amendments is accepted, directing, replacing requesting with directing. Any more amendments?
Directing, directing na lang, direct.
Yes, the gentleman of the back.
We we move to close the period of amendments.
The Deputy Minority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we we request that the period of amendments be closed.
There is now a motion to close the period of amendment, but before we entertain that, there is, I can see the hands raised. Professor Sayo, what is your pleasure?
Yes, um thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like just to come up an amendment, if it would be possible yet, that it is not only good for this year, that it must be um.
Every year thereafter.
Every year thereafter. Uh the forthcoming years of Ramadan, so that it will, it will no longer be necessary to come up another resolution in the forthcoming years.
So the what, how will the amendment read concerning the 2021 Ramadan Moon Sighting? And and the years thereafter, and the years thereafter, is that correct? Subject to style, if the sponsor will agree? If we, if the principal author will agree to the proposed amendments?
Yeah, um the term annual uh be put in the title so that um it will imply that every year to come, uh so it will not be only limited to this year 2021. If it would be okay for the principal authors coming up with that amendment uh implying time?
Miss, Mrs. Speaker, I think the appropriate.
Delete the year 2021.
There is?
Yeah. The annual Ramadan Moon Sighting. Wala ng annual? Pwede rin.
One minute suspension.
May I be allowed to continue, Mr. Speaker?
Please go direct to the point, uh go to the proposed amendment, no more speeches.
Um to conduct annually, to correct the the grammar, to conduct annually before Ramadan.
To conduct annually, the Ulama consultation.
To conduct. Annual.
Mr. Speaker, point of clarification.
What is the point of clarification, Deputy Speaker of ARSEMA?
Mr. Speaker, I think uh the original formulation should work already, considering that this is a mandate as expressed in the Bangsa Moro, a mandate of the Darul Ifta as expressed in the Bangsa Moro Administrative Code, Mr. Speaker. Uh I believe that there is no need to amend the title of excluding the date of uh uh the the year 2021, because the annual moon sighting is a task mandated uh by the Administrative Code on the Darul Ifta, Mr. Speaker.
I agree with that, Professor Ojja. In other words, this resolution is just a gentle reminder of the mandate under the Admin Code of the Darul Ifta Office.
Okay, agreed.
The, so Professor Ojja agrees. So no need for an additional amendment. The, there is a motion, I'll go back to the motion of the Majority Leader to approve this Resolution 391.
Mr. Speaker.
Second.
Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of MP Maisara, dam damon latif?
Mr. Speaker, I would like to amend the title, drop the word "regional" to make it "Bangsa Moro Darul Ifta", because this is a mis, misnomer. There is no such thing as Regional Darul Ifta. There is only a Bangsa Moro Darul Ifta in the Bangsa Moro Administrative Code.
Accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Accepted. Anymore?
And uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, I believe that the uh formulation a while ago of MP Ujja is very proper. Although it is a gentle reminder, we really want this to be an annual gathering of Ulama. So maybe we can also put that here, that concerning the twenty twenty-one Ramadan Moon Siting and come up with an annual unified declaration, annually, come up annually with unified declaration for the starting of fasting, come up with, come up annually. Come up annually with, that's the word, Mr. Speaker, because that would really reflect that it is their job and it, we are reminding them to do that every year. We don't need resolution every year. So this resolution is enough reminder for them, Mr. Speaker. I so submit, Mr. Speaker.
Accepted, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, so Professor Ojja, original resolution has been a proposal and may has been resurrected by MP Maisara. Accepted?
Yes, accepted, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Accepted.
Yes.
Uh is there any?
Mr. Speaker, please reflect my amendment also because I wish to be co-author.
Yes, accepted to, Mr. Speaker.
Accepted. Co-author.
Those who manifested their uh co-authorship, Mr. Speaker, uh in advance, uh like uh.
Yes.
Jh MP Abdullah Pak.
The, Mr. Speaker, it's already been submitted to the.
Already listed, so there is no motion to approve.
And I think, Mr. Speaker, those who want to uh co-author, Mr. Speaker, just to raise their hands and for our secretary to. Yes, for our secretary to call the.
Is there any objection to the motion approved? Their proposed, say here's none, proposed Resolution 391 is approved.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, we proceed to the next uh resolution, proposed resolution in order of business. We are proposed Resolution Number 395, uh Resolution entitled Resolution Expressing full support to the National and MOH Barm Deployment and Vaccination Plans for COVID-19 Vaccines Vaccines and urging all government units, agencies and instrumentalists in the Barm in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region to provide full cooperation, including advocacy, education and information campaign for successful implementation, Mr. Speaker. The parliamentary status of this is uh in a period of interpellation and debate. Uh may we respectfully recognize the principal author, MP Zulkarni Abbas, Mr. Speaker.
Uh we are now, we will now open the period of interpellation and debate?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
The, there is now a motion to open, the, it's the period of interpellation and debate is open. Uh may we recognize uh MP Jor Calornine Abbas?
May we request any members of the parliament who will like to interpolate, may just raise the hands. Uh may we first recognize MP uh Jose Lorena, Mr. Speaker.
MP, the gentleman from Sulu, MP Jol Lorena is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh thank you, Majority Leader. Uh well, before I go to the uh interpellation, I would like to state a premise. I have observed that this parliament has been consistent in passing resolutions expressing support to the implementation of programs mandated to agencies. If we will do that, then we become a supporting agency. Uh it is not the tradition of parliament to support programs which has already been defined for each and various agencies. I hope this will be the last resolution of support. While I do not object, but it would be sad to note that we will be called the Parliament for Resolution Expressing Support to Mandated Programs. So I just want to maintain the prestige and integrity of the parliament. Uh so word of caution, we have, there is already the temerity to pass resolution. When this uh, the subject of the resolution are already mandates of agencies defined in the Administrative Code. Nonetheless, let me just ask if the proponent would uh accede to some clarificatory question?
Will the principal proponent of the resolution uh yield to a few clarificatory question?
Uh yes, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Go ahead, MP Jol Lorena.
Mr. Speaker, is the vaccination vaccination program defined by this resolution already responsibility of the Department Ministry of Health?
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Is this uh program supported by funds already from the appropriation passed by the parliament?
Uh the vaccination program uh is uh the vaccines that we had uh was given by.
Please uh speak louder, especially with your face mask, I could hardly understand.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh the um funds, the vaccines that uh we used came from the national government, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Uh is this uh support coming from the national government part of that uh Act of Congress which allow the uh national government to provide funding for vaccination for all uh department, for all regions of the country?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Do this resolution purports to state that there is no support from the parliament?
Uh no, Mr. Speaker, but uh actually, um what we, what the intent here, Mr. Speaker, is that we would like to gather master as much support that we can from all sectors of society. We are doing this even though the programs is uh uh the program of the Bangsa Moro government, yet we ask, for example, we ask the support of the Darul Ifta. For example, even though the Darul Ifta is part of the Bangsa Moro government, we ask for their support in giving, like for example, giving fatwa. We ask for support from local politicians, even though the local politicians are part of the Barm government. And it is not impossible, Mr. Speaker, that we would like to ask support from the BTA Parliament, because that would booster the moral support that we have. That is not for the purposes, the uh the the purpose of the set the resolution is not uh to remind the Bangsa Moro Parliament, but this is for purpose of advocacy, Mr. Speaker.
Uh thank you. So is this uh that precisely because our people is not uh accepting vaccination as provided for by the ministry?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Actually, in a survey, seventy-eight percent of the, of those surveyed, uh seventy-eight percent of uh people in the in Mindanao, they do not support, they do not, they have um reservations regarding the safety and efficacy of vaccines. That is why we are mastering, we are gathering all supports from uh leaders. Uh there is also, if I may, I would like to also explain that in a study, we have conducted a study with UNICEF, together with UNICEF, the Ministry of Health and UNICEF. We studied where the people um get their information from and where the people really rely on reinformation regarding health matters. So number one, the study found out that there are five main sources. There are five main sources of information that people on the ground in the community rely on for uh uh kung talaga, yung talagang pinaniniwalaan nila. Unang-unang po na pagtalaman po natin, unang-unang kumukuha po sila ng reliable information from the religious leaders. Second, kumukuha sila ng information na reliable from their barangay captain. They believe. They believe their barangay captain, pangatlo po yung barangay health workers nila. Okay, then pangapat po yung mga sikat po ng mga politicians. Okay, then ang panglast po, according to the survey, is, uh, yung mga experts. So ibig sabihin, that is the reason why, kung nakita po natin, in every activity or in every issue, for example, the hijab day, lumabas po yung, uh, talakayan, no, sa social media, kung ito ba ay, uh, pida o hindi, no? So ibig sabihin, there is a growing, merong pong, uh, there is a growing, uh, sense, no? A growing need for the MRLs to be involved in this. And nakita po sa survey talaga na ang una pinapaniwalaan ay MRLs. Dahil kasama po sa survey na yun, yung mga, uh, known politicians, no, kaya po natin hinehikayat ang parliament na bag-express po ng kanilang supporta.
Uh, thank you, uh, in this, do you, are you saying that the reluctance of people to accept particularly vaccination is because they are receiving, uh, incorrect information?
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Had the Ministry of Health tied up with some agencies of government that particularly advanced information to do information campaign so that the people will correctly understand the importance of the vaccination and at the same time to dispel the qualms of our people that this vaccination will have, will trigger other ailments?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we already, um, organized a, uh, information, information and communication teams in all provinces, aside from those from the region, Mr. Speaker. We have, uh, released infographics and we are on the process of releasing, uh, commercials to all the radio stations, uh, to, to important radio stations in the farm region, Mr. Speaker.
Have we, have we coordinated with local governments to top their own information officers in the regions considering that they are supposed to be the direct representative of government in their area?
Yes, we have, uh, already, as I've said, uh, Mr. Speaker, we have already organized the, um, provincial, uh, information and communication teams specifically for COVID vaccine, uh, COVID-19 vaccination. And, uh, one of their task is to coordinate with the local, uh, chief executives in their area, Mr. Speaker.
As a concrete manifestation of the support of parliament, are you not asking members of the parliament to be vaccinated ahead of the people?
Um, we have tried, Mr. Speaker, because we have a budget allocation of five hundred million and everyone is aware of this. We have, uh, tried to procure, but, uh, in the procurement of vaccines, Mr. Speaker, um, there should be a tripartite agreement. Uh, the agreement between the, um, those, from us, from the Ministry of Health, who intend to buy the vaccines. Then second, there's, uh, the manufacturer, for example, AstraZeneca or Sinovac, uh, whichever, um, company we want to buy from. Then the third is from the Department of Health. But the, the Department of Health, uh, is really sticking to their, uh, to their, um, prior, uh, rule that, uh, we need to vaccinate, uh, the three groups. So we have priority group one, then, uh, group two or group, uh, uh, B, then the third group. So, uh, uh, the first group, as we have mentioned before in the previous, uh, discussions, Mr. Speaker, uh, is, uh, the group composed of, uh, the health workers from the regional, provincial, municipal city down to the barangay levels up to the barangay health emergency uh, response teams, the behards. Then, uh, the second is the indigent population, uh, indigent senior citizens, then the third is the senior citizens. Then the, uh, those, uh, health personnel in other ministries. Then second is the, uh, workers in the industry, the, uh, the MSSD, for example, in the agricultural sector, and then comes the other workers. Then the third group is the, all of the rest of the, uh, citizens. So, uh, in the tripartite agreement, even if we want to buy, we cannot, uh, just give it to whoever we want to give it to. Because the DOH is a signatory to that tripartite agreement and they are sticking to the, um, rule that we should prioritize the A group first.
Uh, pardon my ignorance, are members of the parliament considered frontliners or not?
Uh, it is, of course, uh, Mr. Speaker, we are considered frontliners, but we are, uh, the, um, Group A is considered, uh, the Group A states that it is the health frontliners first, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, from the profile of the parliament, I can see that majority of us are senior citizen. Are senior citizens given priority in the vaccination for the park?
Uh, in the Group A, uh, Mr. Speaker, um, it comes after, uh, the health workers, Mr. Speaker. After the vaccination of health workers in both the, uh, public and the private sector, then comes the indigent senior citizens, then after that is the senior citizens.
If the members of the parliament who are senior citizens are ready to be vaccinated, do we have already the vaccines?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh, actually, the initial, uh, allocation that we have, we have, we are already, um, uh, giving it to the, uh, health workers that we have in the hospitals first. Then after that, it is, it will be in the interest of the, uh, health offices like in the provinces, in the municipal health offices, city health offices, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, my last question, Mr. Speaker, is in the current, uh, stock of our vaccine, what are these vaccines? What are they? Are there Sinovac, Sanica, uh?
The first that arrived, Mr. Speaker, are, is the, uh, Sinovac vaccines. Um, then, uh, it was followed by the AstraZeneca vaccine. So, uh, only two, we only have two because, uh, although Pfizer vaccines are available in the, uh, DOH central office, but we did not procure it due to the problem that we have in storage because that would require minus seventy degrees centigrade, uh, storage, Mr. Speaker.
As an, as an expert on this matter, may I ask your expert opinion? As between the two available vaccine, which is preferable? That will be my last question.
Which is preferable?
Between the two available.
With that two available, uh, actually, it is the prerogative of, uh, the individual, whether he wants the Sinovac or the, um, Astra. Um, I would just like to explain, Mr. Speaker, the difference between the two. The Sinovac vaccine is a dead, uh, contains dead virus. So patay po yun, so ibig sabihin, makakapagwan siya. Uh, yung AstraZeneca po, we, is a weakened virus or a attenuated virus. So whichever of the two, pwede rin po naman. Uh, sa efficacy, uh, the Sinovac is noted to have fifty, fifty percent efficacy in preventing minor, so ibig sabihin, minor illnesses, uh, fifty percent po yung kanilang efficacy. It has seventy percent efficacy in preventing viruses in general, or the COVID-19 in general. But with severe COVID, it is one hundred percent effective. So ibig sabihin po nun, kapag tayo po ay nabakunahan ng Sinovac, we do not expect that hindi ka talaga magaka COVID. Pwede ka magkaroon ng COVID, pero hindi ka magkakaroon ng severe COVID. So you are prevented from that, one hundred percent insha'Allah. So, uh, nasa sa tao na po, no, kung ano po yung gusto niyang, uh, gamitin.
From the chair, uh, may I be allowed, uh, just one question?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Have you profiled already the senior citizens, members of this parliament?
Uh, wala pa po, no, uh, we have not yet profiled the senior citizens of this parliament. But, uh, insya'Allah, uh, we will be ahead of, uh, the, uh, profiling of the senior citizens, uh, region wide. We will be getting it from the, um, Secretary General, insya'Allah, Mr. Speaker. Secretary General, insya'Allah.
Secretary General.
Yes, kukunin po namin yung list.
Oh, ngayon, siguro mas maaga, mas maganda, di ba?
Yes, po.
Uh, whenever it comes, na yun na, pwede na, at least nakaprofile na.
Yes, po.
Ready na ang information. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, may we respectfully recognize MP Ziya for the inter, as per interplay, Mr. Speaker.
MP Ziya, Deputy Speaker Ziya Agyong is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Ganda ng batik shirt mo.
Thank you very much, ma'am, for the compliment. Pareho kami ni Sekjen. Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, may I ask if the proponent of this resolution do yield some clarificatory questions, Mr. Speaker?
Gladly, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, three days ago, I guess over a week ago, the IPH of Provincial Law, of Provincial Government of Lano del Sur started the vaccination program. Uh, may I ask, Mr. Speaker, from the proponent, is this part of the program that is now being discussed under this resolution, Mr. Speaker? Or is it a separate provincial initiative by the province?
No, po, uh, that is the same, uh, program, Mr. Speaker.
So the allocation, Mr. Speaker, for the vaccination programs, is it course through the MOH or is it directly downloaded to the provincial IPH?
Uh, it is, uh, course through the Ministry of Health, uh, Mr. Speaker. We have given, we have, uh, the, um, IOM has given us a vehicle, uh, the vaccine transportation vehicle. Uh, we have given, we are given three, one in the region, one in Magindanao and one for Lano del Sur. So all of the vaccines, uh, nasiscentralize po sa Amin.
So what is, Mr. Speaker, the determination of the MOH insofar as the distribution per provinces? Is it based on the actual infectious, the transmission rate or is it based on population, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, we have, the, uh, allocation that we have in the farm is dependent on the list that we will be submitting, we are submitting in the, uh, to the DOH. Um, we have, uh, mastered, we have, uh, asked, we gave memo to all of the IPHs to give us a master list of all the health workers in their province. So so far, uh, Mr. Speaker, we have thirteen thousand four hundred ninety identified, uh, first recipients of these vaccines. So based on the master list that the IPHs have given us and that is, that is the basis for the allocation, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, is it correct that the vaccination program, uh, or the Sinovac that is now being administered to our health workers only acquired or secured, uh, the emergency use authority? And therefore, this vaccination or these vaccines are not to be administered on the general population, am I correct, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, the, uh, emergency use authorization, Mr. Speaker, simply means that you cannot procure the vaccine from a private company. It will be given only to governments in emergency cases only. So this, uh, COVID-19 is considered as an emergency. Uh, as I've, as I've said before, uh, the studies for vaccine, safety and all, uh, usually requires three to four years. But be, but because, uh, this is an emergency situation, the World Health Organization issued an emergency use authorization only, not for commercial purposes, but emergency use authorization.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Speaker, is it true that in order for us to control the spread, we need at least seventy percent herd immunity rate? And that is precisely why we need the vaccine, we need to strengthen and to mobilize and to intensify our vaccination program because we need to reach at least seventy percent herd immunity?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So in that case, Mr. Speaker, how does the MOH contemplate on providing or reaching that seventy percent level of immunity if we are only to use or administer the vaccines only to the frontliners, medical frontliners? Does the MOH contemplate or does it propose a much wider, wider coverage of administering these vaccines, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, actually, the, uh, the grouping is a matter of prioritization only, Mr. Speaker. Uh, as I have mentioned, the group C is the rest of the community, which means the rest of the Bangsa Moro people. Um, the Philippine government is intent on buying hundred forty-eight million doses of, uh, for all the Filipinos. So, uh, insya'Allah, by the end of May, we will be having, we will be procuring an additional five million. So I don't think that this will stop, Mr. Speaker, it's actually tuloy-tuloy na po yung pagbabakuna natin.
Mr. Speaker, I believe part of the challenge insofar as making sure that the vaccination program would be effective in our region is because of the misunderstanding of miseducation of the general public. Will the gentleman, the deputy minister, agree with me that part of strengthening education and communication, uh, that I believe the parliament has to play in order to strengthen and to unmake it, and to relay the message to the public that it is safe for us to be vaccinated? We, as a member of the government, should be responsible enough uh, not to say anything that is based on unfounded allegation, am I correct, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So, uh, based on his, uh, expertise as a doctor, is it untrue to say that the vaccines, because this is part of the challenge and this has been circulated? Uh, many of our, many of the residents in the farm actually do not want to be vaccinated. In fact, the provincial IATF of Lano del Sur already, uh, initially planned to secure a hundred million pesos for the vaccination acquisition. So it's part of the, not only of the, the challenge on the part, uh, on the issue of logistics, but even on the education and advocacy program. So I believe based on their surveys, only less than twenty percent in Lano del Sur wants to be vaccinated, that is excluding the medical frontliners because of the news that has been spreading online. So based on his, uh, professional expertise, do vaccine manufacturing use undeveloped human embryo? Or is it the fake news?
May I know the relevance of the question, Mr. Deputy Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I believe the resolution seeks to strengthen the advocacy program and this is well connected with our responsibility as a public officer to avoid.
Did I hear you correctly, the, about human embryo?
Yes, that is.
That is part of the articles, Mr. Speaker, that has been spreading online and that's why I would like to seek his, uh, expertise on this matter because he is, I believe, uh, one of the major proponent of, for the vaccination program. I just want to clear out some misconception because unfortunately, many of our residents, including some of our colleagues, some of our peers in the public service do believe that such vaccination, maybe using manufacturing, vaccine manufacturing companies do use some unmethod, unorthodox method in producing this vaccine, so we just to make, point that out and put in on record, Mr. Speaker.
Parang kasama sa.
Advocacy program in education.
Vaccine, yung.
Yes.
The use of human embryo, is that?
Yes, actually, uh, that is unfounded, Mr. Speaker, no?
That is what?
Yes, that is unfounded. Uh, hindi, wala, unfounded po, that is an unfounded information. Um, we talked with, uh, actually, we, as a ministry, we talked with the manufacturers of, uh, AstraZeneca and Pfizer, no? And, uh, we asked about the, uh, uh, components of the said vaccines. So, um, they assured us that there are no haram ingredients in those vaccines, uh, Mr. Speaker. Um, including the, uh, unfounded information that, uh, phytus, uh, the use of phytus are, uh, the vaccines contain phytus, no, wala po, wala pong ganon, uh, information.
Mr. Speaker, may I proceed with my last, uh, three questions, follow-up questions? On the same subject matter, advocacy, Mr. Speaker.
Last question?
Last, three last questions.
Last three questions, after that, no more extension.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I can guarantee you that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, again, uh, part of the challenge is not only on the logistics, but to counter misinformation.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, will the gentleman agree with me that in order to boost the morale of those who are advocating a widespread vaccination program, we also need to be conscious about the unique character of the farm by tying up or by partnering with, I believe, with our ulama sector? And in this case, Mr. Speaker, should we need? And in this case, Mr. Speaker, should we need an express fatwa from the Darul Ifta to make sure that the vaccines that are to be administered for the general use are safe, effective, and halal?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. In fact, uh, Mr. Speaker, the regional Darul Ifta already had, uh, issued uh, infatwa on this, Mr. Speaker, specifically for COVID-19 vaccine. Meron na po.
Thank you. So, I think we should, we only need to contemplate on spreading this information to our counterpart Provincial Darul Ifta for the benefit of those who needed to be educated, uh, to be educated on this vaccination program. Last, may I, last question, Mr. Speaker? There is a new Philippine variant. Should we be concerned, uh, Mr. Proponent? Uh, uh, there's, there are news articles came out late of late that there is a new evolved variant in the Philippines, unique in the Philippines.
Actually, Mr. Speaker...
Should we be concerned, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, actually, the, the variants, actually, the COVID-19, regarding, regardless of the variants. Okay, so, uh, we still need to institute the, um, minimum public health standard set by the MOH and the DOH regarding COVID-19 safety. So, meron pa rin dapat 'yung, uh, physical distancing, then nandyan pa rin po tayo 'yung palaging pag-handwash or disinfection of the hands, then the continuous use of the face mask. Vaccination is just one part of the, um, prevention of, uh, COVID-19 regardless of, uh, the variant. Uh, the variants, the, uh, vaccines that we have, uh, it was proven to have cross, uh, safety, no? So, meron pa rin san cross efficacy sa UK variant. So, with the Philippine variant, I think it is still under investigation, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Once the vaccine is out, I will offer you my arm to be your first guinea pig. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Inshallah, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Deputy Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may we respectfully recognize, uh, MP Amir Mawali to be followed by MP Romeo Saliga, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, MP Amir Mawali is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, uh, I'd like to ask on the...
If the author will yield?
Yes, of course.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, may in, may data or information na lumabas kahapon that, uh, as of yesterday, there are around for BARM, BARM region, there are around eighteen thousand four hundred doses of the COVID vaccine, uh, that was allotted or have rece, have been received by the, by the BARM region. Is this true, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, and is it also true that the current deployment, Mr. Speaker, uh, is intended only for the healthcare workers or the frontliners?
Yes, the frontliners in the hospitals, Mr. Speakers po 'yung una. Sa ngayon po, nasa the hospitals po 'yung inuuna natin. After that, it will be the healthcare workers in the field offices.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to ask if these frontliners are required to have, uh, to, to, to be vaccinated by the, by, by, by the COVID-19 vaccine?
No, Mr. Speaker. Uh, we require, no? We require pa rin po natin 'yung written consent of the patients, Mr. Speaker. I would like to appraise, Mr. Speaker, this August body as to the situation, no? Kung ilan na ba ang nabakunahan natin? So, out of those healthcare workers, three thousand seven hundred sixty-two of them, which is the hospital frontliners in the BARM that was submitted to us by the, uh, IPHs, we were already, uh, we have already given or vaccinated one thousand seven hundred seventy-six. That's forty-eight percent, uh, Mr. Speaker, of all, uh, frontliners in the hospitals.
This is for the first dose?
First baseball, yes.
One thousand, around?
One thousand seven hundred seventy-six.
How many percentage?
Forty-eight percent, Mr. Speaker.
How do we reconcile the data of the DOH and the National Task Force COVID that puts the percentage at twelve percent?
Uh, no, Mr. Speaker. Uh, that pertains to all of the, uh, uh, healthcare workers, Mr. Speaker. For example, the health, the total of all health workers in the master list that we have submitted to us by us is thirteen thousand four hundred ninety. So, we will able to, uh, vaccinate one thousand nine hundred seventy-eight of them, and that is fourteen percent. That's fourteen percent of all health workers, lahat po ng health workers yun. We have sixty-four deperals, and we have eighteen refusals. So, hindi po ito, uh, mandated.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, para lang ma-enlighten 'yung public, uh, ano 'yung pacing ng, uh, between first dose and the second dosage? Uh, may, may, I understand that the Sinovac has this, uh, from, from the first time na binaccinate ka, uh, how many, how many days, how many weeks? And as, uh, vis a vis, the, 'yung time period nung Astra, AstraZeneca?
Okay, for Sinovac, uh, Mr. Speaker, um, the interval between doses is twenty-eight days. So, for AstraZeneca, it is, uh, dependent, no? So, it's from four to twelve weeks. But, uh, in the Philippines, we take it at eight, eight weeks po, 'yung kuwan, 'yung kapagitan. That is the reason why hindi po, uh, naibigay lahat because, uh, naghihintay pa po tayo doon sa second dose na maibigay. Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, uh, medyo, so, we, we have twenty-eight days for Sinovac, and then for AstraZeneca, the period would be from the first dosage...
Four to twelve weeks.
Four to twelve weeks, how many months is that?
Two, two to three months, uh, one, two, three.
So, Mr. Speaker, mas, kung AstraZeneca 'yung kukunin natin, mas malawak 'yung mga ko-cover natin for the first dosage. Am I right, Mr. Speaker? Because you have three months liway to produce the second dosage.
Yes, hindi po, uh, the same, uh, regardless of the interval. Because, uh, for example, for four thousand two hundred doses of Sinovac that came, Mr. Speaker, ang may bibi, ang mabibigyan namin yan is two thousand one hundred persons, not four thousand plus. Because we are taking into consideration the second dose, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, uh, ano po ba for the healthcare workers, ano 'yung timeline natin to at least cover the majority of, at least for the first dosage?
Uh, wala pong, wala na, wala po tayo nilagay na timeline dyan, Mr. Speaker, because that is a continuous vaccination. And, uh, ang problem natin dito, which we are trying to solve also, Mr. Speaker, is first is, uh, 'yung mga vaccination sites. No, kailangan, uh, kompleto sa facilities, like sa hospital dapat siya, then hindi po dapat putol-putol 'yung kanyang, uh, kuryente, no? The, uh, power supply. So, uh, we were able to procure, um, five, uh, refrigerated container vans that is able to store up to eighty degrees centigrade po. So, ibibigay po natin yan isa sa bawat, uh, probinsya, and one container van will be able to hold one thousand seven, uh, one hundred sev, uh, one hundred fifty, one hundred fifty thousand, uh, vials of vaccines. So, I think, Inshallah, uh, by, uh, the end of March, we will be, uh, instituting that, uh, isa-isap po per province because ang pag-set up po yan is, uh, uh, sunod-sunod, no? So, Inshallah, makakakayanan na po natin yun. Uh, whatever volume of vaccines will come from the DOH central office, Inshallah, kaya na po nating tugonan yun. In terms of, uh, storage, Mr. Speaker.
Last two questions, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, uh, if you are going to, uh, go through the resolution, uh, I think bulk of the prayer would be on the, aside from expressing support, would be, uh, on the provision of communication, education of the, uh, vaccination program of the government. Mr. Speaker, meron na po bang, in the case as what MP Zia Adlontod yung said earlier, medyo unique 'yung situation ng BARM because we, again, first, we are geographically challenged, culturally diverse, we have to consider the nuances in the ground. Meron na po ba tayong comprehensive communication plan on how to approach this, uh, vaccination campaign? Um, if, yes po, uh, can we be, uh, furnished copy, the members of parliament be furnished copy, at least? Kasi we are calling on the line agencies to support the communication initiative. So, mahalaga po siguro na meron tayong isang template for communication, uh, uh, communication implementation because we are avoiding here the fake news, the disinformation, so-called fake news.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we have that at the regional level, and, uh, we are rolling it out at the provincial level, uh, in the coming weeks. Uh, next week, it will be Basulta, uh, we will be convening the communications, information and communications team of all the IPHs in Basulta. Um, we have finished with, uh, Magindanao and Lanau. So, uh, we will be furnishing a copy or copies of said plans to all of the, uh, MPs, Inshallah, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, last question, Mr. Speaker, and a comment perhaps, um... Uh, my, my comment would be dealing on the, uh, I support the expression of support, for support to the program, to the vaccination, but uh, does the proponent believe na mas effective siguro 'yung pagoblige sa mga line agencies if the chief, office of the chief minister will issue a memorandum, uh, directing these line agencies to, uh, come up with their own communication initiative? And as you have said earlier, meron po tayong communication plan. So, baka pwedeng doon sa memorandum ng chief minister, uh, attach is the communications plan that was drafted by the MOH. I think mas, mas mabisa po yun na, na, naissue once kasi we all know that the chief minister, uh, uh, that, that these agencies are, are, are under the jurisdiction of the, um, the chief minister, uh, in the cabinet.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we will take that into consideration po.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Any more, uh, may I call from the Zoom, uh, MP Jamla Ramos?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, before we...
Hello? Mr. Speaker?
Jamla Ramos.
Nino nauna?
Si MP, uh, si Romeo Saliga, to be followed by MP Jamla Ramos, uh, MP May Sara Latip, and MP EBA Di Ali, Mr. Speaker.
So, who do we recognize first?
MP Romeo Saliga, Mr. Speaker.
MP Romeo Saliga is recognized to be followed by any person's name?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, will the proponent of this resolution will respond to some query, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, like, uh, I think it, it has been observed, uh, ang pinakamalaking kalaban talaga na at least 'yung misinformation, no? And then 'yung disinformation, and aside from that, 'yung talagang actual experience on the ground. Like, uh, hanba 'yung COVID-19, ito kasi 'yung nararanasan ng mga tao, kahit na naaksidente lang, naospital, idideclate kaagad ng COVID. So, nagkakaroon siya ng parang takot doon sa babanggitin mo pa lang 'yung term na COVID. And we also hear some, I think in one news, 'yung, uh, merong nagpapakamatay dahil doon sa, uh, trauma, no? Dahil dati meron tayong quarantine, uh, at least ngayon, medyo ano na, no? So, yun 'yung isa na, sa tingin ko, dapat, uh, katulad ng binanggit kanina, na makasama doon sa communication plan. And aside from that, gusto ko lang din tanungin 'yung ating proponent kung doon ba sa five hundred million, ano 'yung, magkano 'yung budget natin ito per patient?
Uh, wala po 'yung, uh, hindi po natin ginonper agi kunyan ng per patient, no? So, that is, uh, intended for, uh, buffer stock. For example, hindi darating 'yung ibang, uh, stocks for, from the central office or madidelay, pwede tayong magprocure ng atin. So, yun po 'yung intention nung five hundred million po, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh, we all know, Mr. Speaker, na 'yung, uh, vaccine, eh, merong mga adverse effect. Kasama ba ho dito sa five hundred million 'yung budget natin in case na medyo ano ho 'yung epekto nung, after nung ba, ma-bakunahan 'yung isang pasyente?
Uh, actually, hindi po doon nakastipulate, Mr. Speaker. But, uh, we are, kaya nga po natin nilalagay, that is the reason why that we put the vaccination sites in all hospitals. So, as to cater those patients na magkakaroon ng adverse events following the immunization. So, if the adverse event is severe enough, the patient will be, um, admitted po sa ating mga hospitals. And, uh, siyempre, alam naman natin na with our hospitals, meron tayong mga programs dyan, uh, for the, uh, indicted patients that will be admitted, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, I think the proponent had, uh, uh, speak about the, 'yung storage nung vaccine. Sa tingin niyo ho ba, Mr. Speaker, sa tingin ho ng ating proponent, Mr. Speaker, hindi naman masyado maselan 'yung storage ng vaccine na kapag ka naexpose sa or hindi na ano ng ganitong temperature, eh, masisira?
Masisira po siya, Mr. Speaker, kapag hindi po naalagaan. That is the reason why, from the manufacturer down to the end user, hindi po maputol dapat 'yung cold chain. Yun 'yung tinatawag na cold chain. So, 'yung pagyung, ma-maintain niyo 'yung lamig from the manufacturer down to the, uh, from the manufacturer hanggang po doon sa end user. That is the reason why, uh, for now, we will not be, uh, receiving Pfizer dose, uh, Pfizer vaccines. But, Inshallah, when the, uh, refrigerated container vans will be installed in all of the provinces, we will be able because, uh, those, uh, refrigerators can handle up to minus eighty degrees centigrade of a temperature, Mr. Speaker.
So, you mean to say, Mr. Speaker, merong parang centralized sa area na doon pupunta 'yung mga patient or doon sila papakunahan?
Yes po, meron po, Mr. Speaker, those are the vaccination sites.
Saang mga usually, ano, saang mga site, uh...
Sa mga hospitals po, Mr. Speaker. And we have identified the hospitals, uh, Mr. Speaker. For Magindanao, we have, uh, Magindanao Provincial Hospital. In Lanau, we have, uh, May Pakpak Medical Center. In, uh, we have Datuhalon Sakilan, we have a Sulu Sanitarium. And, uh, for Basilan, I forgot the, pero hospital din po sa Basilan isa.
Considering 'yung frequency, lalo na sa mga, uh, I hope hindi kasama ito doon sa mga, uh, identified vaccination areas, kumusta naman ho 'yung supply ng energy natin? Kasi usually, katulad ng the previous, ano, dito sa Cotabato City, parang medyo tumagal din 'yung run out, and that could, if wa, wala hong, uh, preparation, adequate preparation, that might, uh, masira ho 'yung ating mga vaccines?
Yes, actually, kasama po yan sa ating, uh, uh, preparedness evaluation, Mr. Speaker. Before we, uh, give the vaccines to those areas, kasama po sa tinitingnan natin 'yung storage capacity nila at 'yung kanilang kuryente po.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, itong vaccination, eh, hindi naman ho mandatory, ano? So, patient can refuse, and they can seek, uh, 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 they can seek, uh, assistance, or they can seek vaccine from other agencies, private, uh, private agencies?
Wala pong private agencies namimigay nitong, uh, vaccines, Mr. Speaker. Uh, as we have said, only the government can procure these vaccines. So, wala pong, uh, ganon, Mr. Speaker.
So, in case they will refuse, uh, Mr. Speaker, like, uh, talagang ayaw nila, so, okay lang ho, wala naman ho, parang some sort of penalty?
Wala po, Mr. Speaker. As I have said kanina, we have eighteen refusals already, no? So, hindi po natin pinipilit 'yung magpapabakuna.
Yes, I think that's all, Mr. Speaker, and thank you very much for the response sa ating proponent.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Who's Majority Leader?
May we respectfully recognize MP Jam Ramos to be followed by MP May Sara Latip, then EDA Ali.
MP Jamla Ramos is recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. At first, my apologies for, uh, my... At first, my apologies for my video. I have very poor signal right now. Mr. Speaker, first of all, I would like to manifest my intention to co-author this resolution. Given the search of new cases in the country, I believe that there is a need to intensify our effort for the vaccination program, which in order to be successful, requires support from all relevant stakeholders. And naniniwala po ako na dapat po tayo sa Bangsa Moro government ang magispiriyad nito. In any case, I would like to ask two questions if our good proponent would yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, yes. First, in the last where as clause of the said resolution, we are likewise asking the support of the concerned private sector. Gusto ko lang pong malaman, who are these people and how do you intend to proceed with this coordination?
Uh, kasama, kasama na po dyan, Mr. Speaker, 'yung number one po talaga is 'yung mga private media, no? Uh, we would like to really, um, partner with them. Dito po sa ating advocacy. And all the related mga, uh, media po na, whether na sa social media man 'yan, sa paid media, we would like them to be our partner in this, Mr. Speaker. So other stakeholders include the INGOs that katuwang po natin doon po sa advocacy, no? So yun po, Mr. Speaker, and others that we deem are important in the advocacy po on COVID-19 vaccination.
Thank you, uh, thank you. Uh, my second question, um, isa po sa mga problema na nakita natin sa vaccination program is 'yung public confidence ng vaccine ito. In line with this, since you've mentioned po, uh, kanina that some forty-eight percent have been vaccinated. Um, in line with this, may I ask about the status or condition of those health workers who received the vaccine? Are there any recorded side or adverse effects? Uh, kasi po kailangan po malaman natin so that we can show the public if there is something that they should worry about. Because if right now, we can show them that there are good results in the sense that there's no recorded adverse effect, then maybe this can help counter the spread of fake news, no? That discourages the public to take the vaccine. And ultimately, this can boost the confidence of the public with regard to the vaccination program.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, um, out of those vaccinated, we have only eleven, no? Eleven po 'yung nagkaroon ng adverse events following immunization. And all of these are minor lang naman. So meron pong nilagnat, meron pong ni-nervios, no? Uh, meron pong nagkaroon ng, uh, pain in the injection site, but we have no serious adverse event. Adverse event following immunization po is a reportable case. So mandated po lahat ng mga vaccination sites natin, naireport po 'yan. And especially 'yung mga adverse events like mga allergies po, talagang kailangan ireport po nila. So so far, we only have eleven, and these are mga minors na side effects po lamang, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that's a good news, no? Uh, maybe, uh, as a form of suggestion, maybe we could get some testimonies, no? From those that were vaccinated. And maybe makakatulong po ito, no? Uh, para spread po natin at mag-counter po natin 'yung fake news. That would be all, Mr. Speaker, and I'd like to commend our good proponent on this resolution.
MP May Sara, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Today marks the first year of the COVID-19 lockdown. So this is a very historic day because today also we are seeing vaccinations all over the country. And in fact, the first to receive the first legal dose of vaccination is Dr. DeGaspie of the UPPGH. May I know, in the case of the Bangsa Moro, since we are an autonomous government, who was the first ever recipient of the vaccination program by the MOH in the Bangsa Moro? And if yes, if we have that first person, may we have a PR or publicity so that that person can also be highlighted in his historic role in fighting COVID-19, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the first to be vaccinated here in our region is the OIC Minister himself, Dr. Amirel Esman, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, thank you very much for that. We need to read more on the experiences of those who first, first, because they are like the first explorers of the moon, right? So we need to know their status, how are they feeling after the vaccine? So that as stated by my fellow colleague, MP Jamila, that the, the public will have the confidence in also undergoing the vaccine. As you know, no one is safe until all of us is safe, and vaccination is one of them. Uh, my, uh, my question for you, Mr. Honorable Deputy Minister, a while ago we were talking in the Committee on Health, is that do we have a strategic communication plan for the COVID-19 vaccination rollout? If yes, can you give me at least three highlights of that strategic communication plan for the COVID-19 vaccination rollout of the Bangsa Moro?
Uh, first, Mr. Speaker, I would like to again mention that we have already, um, organized, uh, established the, um, information and communications team in all provinces, Mr. Speaker. Uh, that's the first. Then the second, um, we have already started doing infographics uh, on COVID-19 vaccination, uh, in the form of videos. But this is, uh, first, um, this is, uh, uh, first release at the so, 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 social media po, Mr. Speaker. So then third, I think for the, we have, um, uh, we are planning to, uh, roll out, no, 'yung training po doon sa mga information teams, sa mga provinces po. As I have mentioned, we are on the process of, uh, formulating the, um, information and communication plan in the individual provinces because magkakaiba po talaga 'yung experiences ng mga provinces. And based po doon sa kanilang particular na situation, uh, kaya nga po hindi namin inisa 'yung pagpapatupad nung information and communication plan. Because what might work in one province might not work well with the other province, Mr. Speaker.
So it is really, Mr. Speaker, uh, my next question is, it's, uh, context matters a lot. So that I would like to know if you have a plan, a communication plan as well, to go into each and every barangay to get the public support and confidence in the immunization plan? Because if our fight against COVID really goes to the grassroots, because even if there's one person who is still carrier of that disease, we will not succeed in this fight against COVID. So do you have any plan to go, to go to the grassroots, to the barangays, to the community of each and every province for this communication and rollout plan of vaccination?
Yes, we have, um, barangay midwives in the, in the barangays, Mr. Speaker. That is, as, siya po 'yung katuwang natin, no, doon sa pagpapalaganap ng mga information. Uh, we are represented in the barangays, although not all, dahil 'yung iba, walang sariling VHS at 'yung ibang mga barangay, walang midwives. But nonetheless, we also have the RHSUs there, the Rural Health Units. Nakatuwang din natin sa pagbibigay. The, um, communication plan, the information and communication plan that we have is contextualized according to province po 'yan, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. In that case, do you have any plan to include the ulama, the youth sector, the women's sector, the non-morang indigenous people, and other sectors in the civil society movement as well as people's organization to help us combat the misconception against the vaccination? Because I am aware right now that in order for us to achieve herd immunity, seventy percent of the population must be immunized. So we need to have all the, all decks onboard, all hands onboard, so to speak. So as the captain of the ship, the Bangsa Moro government, can it include the other sectors, the civil society, as well as the business sectors, the academia, and other important sector, the ulama, towards the vaccination rollout plan, communication plan? And if so, how do you intend to do this?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, actually, kasama po 'yan doon sa ating information and communication plan. As I've said, we will be furnishing, uh, the members of the parliament of this plan, insya'Allah, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My last question is, we know that today also marks the virus strain of the COVID-19. And in fact, the carrying capacity of hospitals outside BARM like Metro Manila is already eighty percent, one hundred percent full, meaning there's no more room for other patients because the COVID-19 has not spread, uh, the carrying capacity. May we know the status of COVID-19 in the Bangsa Moro and the carrying capacity of our hospitals right now?
Okay, Mr. Speaker, um, as of the moment, no, as of yesterday, actually, um, bumababa na po 'yung data natin sa ating mga provinces. In fact, from a high of hundred plus, we only have seventy-four active cases of, um, COVID-19. Uh, forty-one of these is from Lanau del Sur thirteen, sa Magindano, and the rest is Basulta areas. And kung nakikita natin sa data na'to, um, this is an improvement from the high that we had, uh, months before, uh, Mr. Speaker. So, uh, sa ngayon, our hospitals are capable of handling COVID-19 cases. We have instituted, uh, we have established, no, uh, CTMFs or Temporary Treatment and Monitoring Facilities. I'm sure, um, we have, uh, you have heard of the hundred-bed capacity facilities that we have established in the, uh, in all of the provinces, uh, Mr. Speaker. So doon pa lang, insya'Allah, kaya na po nating, uh, uh, ano'to, uh, we can, uh, cater to mild and moderate cases of COVID-19, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, my last question is, in case of any adverse event or reaction, will the Bangsa Moro government shoulder the hospitalization cost of those who had adverse reaction against the vaccination?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is the reason why we put the vaccination sites in the hospitals, as I have mentioned previously. Uh, specifically for that purpose, na makaiter, makaya po nating i-shirture 'yung kanilang expenses through the ambag or tabang programs and other programs that we have in the hospitals, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Speaker. With that, I am assured that the vaccination program, upon seeing, upon furnishing the copy to the members of the parliament, uh, we will be assured that indeed, uh, there is this strategic communication plan as well as the adverse reaction plan in case of the COVID-19 vaccination. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
MP Edi Ali, last interpreter, Mr. Speaker.
MP Edi Ali is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. May I know if the proponent, Mr. Speaker, is willing to respond to some clarificatory questions?
Uh, gladly, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, our proponent mentioned earlier that for the Sinovac vaccines, we have four thousand two hundred stock, our stock is four thousand two hundred for the Sinovac vaccine?
Yes, that was, uh, that came earlier. First to arrive, Mr. Speaker, four thousand two hundred doses. So this is for two thousand one hundred individuals, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, for two thousand one hundred individuals, okay. May I know, Mr. Speaker, if out of the two thousand one hundred individuals to be vaccinated, if you have allocations for Basilan, Sulu, and Tawi-Tawi?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh, actually distributed na po yun sa lahat, Mr. Speaker, all of the provinces.
Sa ngayon po, mer, andun na po sa kanila?
Yes, po.
And you were also mentioning doon sa mga priority, uh, individuals na three thousand seven hundred sixty-two, forty-eight percent were vaccinated. Ilan po doon sa, I'm, I'm concerned of Tawi-Tawi? Doon po sa two thousand one hundred, ilan po ang vaccinated sa Tawi-Tawi?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, wala, na rin na. Uh, I will, I will, uh, Mr. Speaker, I will, uh, update the honorable MP on that because wala po sa, sa listahan ko 'yung individual province. But for province of Tawi-Tawi, um, we had a meeting actually last week, uh, sa lahat po ng provinces, but Dr. Latcha was not able to come because dahil nga doon, uh, sinalubong po niya 'yung pagdating nung mga vaccines. So the vaccines are already allotted for Tawi-Tawi, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Sana po, magkakaroon din po tayo ng, ng, uh, update tungkol dyan po. So that we can also monitor what is happening also to our respective provinces po. Maliban po doon sa, sa Sinovac, uh, meron, meron ba tayong stock ng AstraZeneca?
Yes, po. Yun po 'yung second na dumating.
Okay. Uh, ilan po ang dumating na stock natin ng AstraZeneca?
Uh, total po nung allocation po natin is eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand?
Eighteen thousand. So around the, nasa mga eleven thousand po 'yung, uh, AZ, AstraZeneca po.
And doon po sa first priority natin, sinabi po niyo na thirteen thousand four hundred ninety?
Thirteen thousand four hundred ninety, total of the healthcare workers po 'yan.
Okay. Total po ng healthcare workers po yun?
Opo, Mr. Speaker.
Doon po ba sa, uh, vaccination plan ng, ng MOH BARM? Ang head ba ng IPHOs, for example? Ang mga rural, uh, uh, frontliners po natin? Sila po ba ang unahin doon sa vaccination?
Gaya ng sinabi po natin, Mr. Speaker, ang una, ang inuna po natin ay mga frontliners sa mga hospitals. Okay, so pagkatapos po nun, isusunod na po natin 'yung mga frontliners natin doon po sa, uh, mga, uh, mga field, no? So gusto ko lang sagutin 'yung, uh, katanungan po ni MP patungkol po doon sa, uh, kung ano na, ilan na po ba ang nabakunahan doon po sa, uh, Sulu, no? So, uh, for Tawi-Tawi. So for Tawi-Tawi, ang target population po natin doon is two thousand seven hundred eighty-four. So out of that, four hundred twenty-five na po ang nabakunahan, apat po ang nadephr. So ito po 'yung mga pasyente na, uh, pag-checkup po sa kanila, hindi sila pwedeng bigyan. Then dalawa po ang refusal, and, uh, we have a total of fifteen percent na nabakunahan po for Tawi-Tawi.
Maraming salamat po sa information. Uh, you, we are requesting this resolution, the support, no, for our vaccination plans. Karamihan po sa atin nagtatanong, uh, while gusto po natin masuportahan ang ating vaccination plans, pero wala pong kaming hawak kung ano po 'yung vaccination plans na yun. So sana po, uh, Mr. Speaker, um, while we, while we support the vaccination plans of our MOH BARM, no? Uh, sana po, Mr. Speaker, uh, 'yung suporta na po 'yan, nauna rin po ang, kung ano bang plano, makikita po natin. Kaya po nagtatanong ang lahat eh, san po 'yung plano, ano po 'yung plano, 'yung mga strategic plans na po 'yan. Sana po, Mr. Speaker, in due time, no? Uh, kung po pwede po, uh, sa next week's session natin, mabigyan na po ang, ang members ng parliament ng ating, uh, vaccination plans po, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, ito po 'yung vaccination plan na tinutukin ni MP Edi Ali. We gave it yesterday po. And the email was already forwarded to your email, respective emails of our MPs, uh, I think one month ago or two months ago, uh, when we had this discussion before. And, uh, nandito po nakalagay 'yung Philippine National Deployment and Vaccination Plan for COVID-19 Vaccines. Included na po dyan 'yung BARM. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, namentioned po kanina na marami pong apprehensive tungkol dito sa vaccination na'to. Importante po 'yung sinabi mo, Mr., uh, Mr. Proponent, Mr. Speaker. sa vaccination na 'to. Importante po 'yung sinabi mo, Mr. Uh, Mr. Proponent, Mr. Speaker, ng ating OIC, uh, minister, ang una po
Yes, Mr.
na vaccinated po.
Opo.
Um, again, kasama po ba sa plano natin, sinabi po niyo kanina na sa, sa inyong survey, uh, 'yung pinaniwalaan ng tao, ng karamihan, 'yung mga ulama natin, 'yung mga religio- religious leaders natin, okay. So, ito ba, ito po ba ay kasama sa plano natin na mayipakita po natin na ang mga ulama at mga, at mga ustads natin, uh, ang mauuna rin, no, pagdating dun po sa kanila? Kasi importante po dito, Mr. Speaker, na 'yung paniwalaan ng tao, kung sila po, mga ulama ang dun po naka, nakatutok ang paniwalaan ng karamihan, kasama po ba sa plano natin 'yung pagbibigay po sa kanila ng, uh, vaccines po?
Insyaallah po, kasama po 'yun. Uh, gaya po ng sinabi natin, uh, 'yung mga institutions, actually, uh, nung sa, 'yung sa original po na proposal natin, eh, kasama po dapat 'yung, uh, uh, the Bangsa-Moro Government Center as a vaccination site. Kasama po dapat 'yun dito, but, uh, hindi po 'yun naaprobahan kaya nga po, uh, dahil po, uh, una-una, uh, hindi siya malapit sa hospital, pangalawa po, uh, hindi po priority 'yung mga, uh, nandito po sa atin, no? So, uh, frontline health workers muna sa hospitals, and then frontline health workers sa field, 'yun po 'yung inuna po nila. That is the reason why we deferred, uh, putting up a vaccination site po dito sa Bangsa-Moro Government Center. And of course, kasama po natin 'yung ating mga, uh, Muslim religious leaders, 'yung ating mga ulama, doon po sa mga hakbang na ginagawa po natin, like, uh, bago po nagsimula 'yung vaccination, sinigurado na, natin na makapagbigay po ng fatwa 'yung ating Darul Ifta, for instance. So meron na pong na, nailabas na fatwa, uh, declaring the vaccination as a whole generally as halal. Okay, at, uh, binigyan po tayo ng authority ng Darul Ifta to discern kung, uh, ito ba ay makakabuti or hindi.
Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker.
While 'yung fatwa po ay, ay nakakatulong, pero alam mo po, sa karamihan ng tao, ay gusto po nila makita
Yes.
na sila mismo ay nag, ay being vaccinated. In fact po, even nationally, eh, gusto ng mga, ng taong bayan, 'yung presidente, 'yung vice-presidente ang mauuna eh. So ito po, uh, bahagi po ba pagdating po sa, sa kanilang priority lane? 'Yung tayo po dito, halimbawa, from the executive department, kasama po ba sa plano na makikita ng taong bayan? Itong mga, itong mga ministers, no, deputy ministers and so on, kasi nakakatulong po 'yun sa ano, no, sa pagkakaroon ng, ng panindigan, ang mga tao na tama, sila ang naunay. So ito po ba'y kasama, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, pagka-dumating na po tayo sa puntong, napaloob na po 'yung mga, uh, kagalang-galang na mga ministers and members of parliament, uh, rest assured din, insyaallah, na pwede po nating unahin 'yung ating mga, uh, personalities po.
Se- my second to the last question. Uh, kanina rin po, sinabi ng ating, uh, proponent, Mr. Speaker, na maliban doon sa mga ulama, eh, 'yung mga local government units head, again, ang pinaniwalaan po, barangay chairman, mayor, o governor, ganun, no? So, again, ang tanong ko po, ito po ba ay bahagi din ng ano, ng ating, uh, plano, na itong mga, itong mga heads of, ng local government units, including the barangay chairman and women, eh, sila rin po ay mauna makita ng taong bayan po?
Insyaallah po, kapag, uh, napaloob na po sila doon sa, uh, priority groups po na, or 'yung, kung sino po 'yung kasunod, pag sila po ay napaloob doon, uh, insyaallah, unahin po natin sila.
Uh, maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Uh, gusto ko lang po malaman, lastly, ano po 'yung status ng COVID-19 infection in Tawi-Tawi po?
So, uh, na rin lang po. So, indik, indik, uh, i, uh, update ko nalang po ang ating butihing member of parliament regarding the status. Uh, hindi ko po nadala 'yung aking data, na disaggregated po per province, but, uh, meron lang po ako dito is 'yung, uh, general, no? So, so far, 'yung ating cases naman sa Tawi-Tawi is, hindi po 'yan umabot ng lima. Gaya ng sinabi ko po, we have seventy-four active cases sa ngayon, forty-one po sa Lano del Sur and thirteen sa Magindanaw, that's fifty-four already. So 'yung twenty was distributed in the Basulta areas po.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Lastly, I would like to manifest po to be co-author if the proponent po accepts my intention po.
Uh, gladly, Mr. Speaker.
Just to commit it one last, Mr. Speaker, uh, just a brief, uh, clarificatory questions. MP, uh, MP Mujahid, Mr. Speaker, this will be the last.
MP Mujahid is recognized. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Majority Leader. Uh, simple, uh, clarificatory question lang po, uh, uh, Mr. Speaker, kung anda pa po mag, uh, sumagotang ating, uh, speaker sa MOH, uh, MP Abbas?
Uh, gladly, Mr. Speaker.
Um, my first question po, Mr. Speaker, tulad din po ng, na, natanong ng mga, uh, kasamahan po natin dito, tungkol namang po ito sa Basilan, kung ilan po ang vaccine na nabigay sa Basila, at kung may nabaccine na po ba?
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Speaker, gaya ng sinabi po natin kanina, uh, meron na pong, uh, bakuna na dumating na rin po sa lahat po ng provinces. For Basilan, we have one thousand eight hundred twenty-two na target population po, Mr. Speaker, and, uh, ang nabakunahan po natin is forty-six. So isa po ang deferred dyan, and, uh, zero ang refusal, then, uh, we have three percent pa lang po na nabakunahan. But that was March fourteen, so daily naman po talaga 'yung pagbabakuna, so we are awaiting the, uh, report coming from, uh, the IPO Basilan, Mr. Speaker.
Um, thank you po, Mr. Speaker. Uh, for information po, Mr. Speaker, uh, aside from the fatwa given by the Bangsa-Moro Regional Darul Ifta, nagkaroon din po kami meeting sa Basilan Ulama Supreme Council to tungkol po dito, and, uh, uh, we come of also of education to support, uh, really, the, uh, vaccination program, uh, Mr. Speaker. Um, and, uh, the ulama of, uh, the province of Basila are also willing to support, uh, the program and, uh, the planned program of, uh, our MOH, Mr. Speaker. My second and last question, or clarificatory question, Mr. Speaker, uh, kung safe po bang ang vaccine sa mga tao na may heart problem po, Mr. Speaker, 'yung, uh, uh, for instance, Mr. Speaker, 'yung mga, uh, heart attack, o kaya may mga heart failure po, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, dun po sa mga patients na may mga comorbidities, ni-require po namin, Mr. Speaker, that they should have first consult their, their, uh, respective doctors, no? So 'yung kanilang mga, uh, specialist po dapat magkapagbigay po sila ng endorsement na safe po 'yung, uh, vaccination para dito sa patient, because, um, hindi po natin, uh, binabakunahan ng basa-basa. Gaya ng sinabi po natin, bago po pakunahan 'yung pasyente, they should have to go first through a screening process. Dito po nangyayari 'yung mga deferals, kaya kung nakikita po niyo, marami po tayong deferals, no? Um, that is the reason, the reason being, na during the, uh, physical examination of these patients, they were found out to have, uh, may mga, siguro 'yung iba may mga sakit sa puso, 'yung iba, they would be, uh, planning for pregnancies, and we do not forego with the vaccination for these patients. So for those patients who have comorbidities, uh, the patient should have first the, um, go signal from their specialist. So dapat, uh, magbibigay po 'yung kanilang doktor na okay lang ito ba pakunahan or hindi.
So kasali po ba dito pa, uh, Mr. Speaker, 'yung mga may hypertension, may high blood?
Yes, po, kasama po dito, Mr. Speaker. Lahat po na may comorbidities, hypertension, diabetes, heart problems, kidney problems, and all.
Okay, maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker, because you're true, Mr. Speaker, uh, nagkaroon din po ako ng, uh, problem po sa heart, that's, that is why I really, uh, want to, uh, know really this, Mr. Speaker. So maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to close the period of interrogation and debate.
There is a motion to close the period of interrogation and debate.
Mr. Speaker, I move to approve the
Objection.
I move to propose, uh, none.
The period of interrogation and debate is hereby closed.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of, uh, proposed resolution number three nine five, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, there is a motion to approve the proposed resolution, uh, three nine five, is there any second? Uh, duly seconded, is there any objection? There here's none, same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, we proceed to, uh, propose resolution number three ninety-seven. Uh, thi- this, uh, have, uh, there, there are three resolutions of the same, uh, subject matter, Mr. Speaker, so therefore I move for the consolidation of proposed resolution number three ninety-seven, four oh four, and, uh, proposed resolution number four zero nine, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, we now proceed to propose resolution three nine seven.
And I move for the consolidation of the three resolutions.
There is a motion to consolidate all relevant, uh, uh, proposed resolutions three nine seven, four zero four, and four zero nine, which are all, which have relevant subject matters.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
They is hereby ordered to be consolidated.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we respectfully recognize MP Zia Alonto as one of the, uh, principal authors of this proposed resolution, Mr. Speaker. MP Zia Alonto, Mr. Speaker.
The Deputy Speaker Zia Alonto Ajung is recognized.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, may be allowed at least four, five minutes, uh, Mr. Speaker, for a sponsorship speech, Mr. Speaker?
You have four minutes and a half.
Thank you very much. I'd try my best to, to beat that. Uh, Bismillah, Rahman, and Rakim. In the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful, all praises due to Allah, the sovereign Lord of the universe, the God of the unseen and the seen, the God of no equal. Peace and blessings be upon the last prophet of God, the seal of the prophet, Muhammad, the son of Abdullah, whom God chose to be the bearer, bearer of his message and his sign of mercy unto mankind. Peace and salutation to the pure progeny of the Prophet and to his fortunate companions. Salaamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakaatuh. Mr. Speaker, and dear colleagues, please do indulge me for a moment as I rise today on a matter of personal privilege to reflect upon the life of the very subject of these consolidated resolutions, the life of the late Governor Princess Tarhata Alontulukman. When people speak of cultural heritage more often than not, they speak of artifacts, of tangible objects passed on from generation to generation with surfaces that bear the indelible marks of our colorful history. Yet behind these objects are hands that made them, and beyond these hands are the minds that shaped these objects according to or as to, as a response to the changing of times. One such example are the hands of Princess Tarhata Alontulukman, or popularly known as Babu Tata, an inspiring figure who defined what it takes to be a Bangsa-Moro woman at a time when conventions chose the mighty and the powerful over truth and justice. On the dawn of February twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, at the age of ninety-five, the Babu of Lano, who dedicated her person, her wealth, her time to serve the greater interest of the people during one of the most tumultuous periods in our history, has peacefully returned to her creator. A clear testament, Mr. Speaker, of these two Quranic verses, Kulun Naf Sinda Ikatulmaut, Innalillahi Wa Inna Ilaihi Rajoon. Having defied and resisted the long-held convention that generally promoted patriarchy and demoted women to the margins, Babu Tata created her own path and defined her story, which now became an integral part of our history. She held the record of having been elected as the first Muslim female governor and one of the pioneering female local chief executives in the whole of the country. Inspired by the cause to attain genuine self-rule for the Moros, which was advocated by her father, the Commonwealth Senator Alawi Alonto, Babu Tata was quoted saying, after the ratification of the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law, and I hear quote in her own words, "Finally," she said, "they are giving us the keys to our own house", unquote. During her term as governor of Lano del Sur, she was selected by her peers as the chairperson for Mindano Governors in nineteen seventy-two. A position so delicate, filled with challenges and danger, and yet how great, how upright she prevailed over those challenges, and how gracious she faced those dangers head-on. She was an outspoken, outspoken critic against the dictatorship and a staunch opposition to martial law. Standing with her husband, the late Paramount Sultan Rashid Lukman, and her brothers, she carried the burden of being among the few who dared to speak, to speak to power, and as a consequence of that, led to her unceremonious removal from office and subsequent exile to Saudi Arabia. Such a heavy price to pay, Mr. Speaker, which she never regretted her life. For having the late Congressman Rashid Lukman for a husband, a renowned Bangsa-Moro icon who championed the congressional inquiry of the infamous Jabina massacre, which tomorrow, Mr. Speaker, by the way, we will commemorate its fifty-third anniversary, an incident which ignited the Moro rebellion that led to where we are now, today. Babu Tata conse- considered her experience, having exiled to Saudi Arabia and with her removal from office, as not some unfortunate political loss, but an opportunity to preserve her dignity and principles. When democracy was restored following the ouster of Marcos by a bloodless revolution in nineteen eighty-six, once again Babu Tata was offered a chance to serve her people as an OIC governor of Lano del Sur. She continued her role as a peacemaker, spent her own wealth to resolve countless clan feuds, for she believed that only through a stable peace and order shall a functioning government, a developed and progressive communities be achieved. She campaigned vigorously for the realization of a genuine autonomy by supporting the resumption of the peace talks between the government of the Philippines and then, and, and by then, the Moro National Liberation Front, which paved the way for the establishment of defunct arms and eventually BARM. It is significant to mention her role in the release of kidnapped Carmelite Nans and missionaries in Marawi City in nineteen eighty-six, a story that was featured in almost all major global publication, an article, for example, published by the Time Magazine in New York Times. This kind of leadership and conviction is the inheritance that the people of the Bangsa-Moro are blessed to receive from her. She was, by every standard, a remarkable woman. That are, that we are able to share stories about her is due to the fact that details about her life is intertwined with the, with the continuing narrative of the Bangsa-Moro self-rule, evident in the way she proudly wore her landak in Malong and ukefang, in official functions and gatherings she attended. It is now our shared responsibility, Mr. Speaker, to preserve and pass on this kind of legacy to the next generation with the same care and attention we afford to objects and artifacts that symbolize our heritage and our rich history. No less that the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law provides the basis for a mandate to preserve the history, culture, art, and tradition, and rich cultural heritage of the Bangsa-Moro people. The Bangsa-Moro Autonomy Act Number Thirteen specifically mandates the Bangsa-Moro Commission for the Preservation of the Cultural Heritage to write and document the history of the Bangsa-Moro people and establish and sustain cultural institutions, programs, and projects in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region. It is within these premises, Mr. Speaker, that I humbly, along with my colleagues in this chamber, submit to the Bangsa-Moro Parliament two resolutions that echo our people's call for institutional memory and knowledge as we assert our right and knowledge as we assert our right, right, right to self-determination. The first is a subject matter of this current, uh, discussion, Mr. Speaker, which is entitled "A Resolution Expressing the Deepest Condolences and Profound Sympathy of the Bangsamur Parliament of the Bangsamur Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao to the bereaved family of former Lanau del Sur Provincial Governor Princess Tarhata Alangadi Alontolukman on her timely demise." And the second, Mr. Speaker, is a resolution directing the Bangsamur Commission for the preservation of the cultural heritage to identify, collect, document and promote the life stories of public figures who've made significant contributions in the history of our people. It is my ardent hope, Mr. Speaker, that we pass this resolution as we are to pass today in the spirit of acknowledging the strides women have achieved in the Bangsamur region with a sincere and steadfast commitment in the Bangsamur region with a sincere and steadfast commitment to uphold gender equality across the region and with the intent of honoring the history and heritage of our people. Mr. Speaker, just over a week ago, the Bangsamur Transition Authority joined the world in the, in observing the International Women's Day. Allow me therefore, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, to consider this piece of legislation that we authored today as a tribute to our women, women colleagues in this parliament and also to the rest of the Bangsamur women who chose the difficulty of serving the greater interest of the Bangsamur over the comfort of their homes. Mr. Speaker, allow me also to take this opportunity to thank all those who condescended with us during our times of bereavement. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you and condolences again.
Mr. Speaker, uh, I believe there is, uh, four members of the MPs who would like to have a period of interrogation and debate. So therefore, Mr. Speaker, I move for the approval of the three consolidated, uh, resolutions, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to co, for, to move for the approval of this, uh, of these resolutions, which are, which, which has to be consolidated. Any second. Julis seconded, any objections? Here here's none, same is approved.
Mr. Speaker, we proceed to the next proposed resolution.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, MP...
May we propose a 10-minute break?
Yes.
I was waiting for that.
Yes.
10 minutes break.
10 minutes break, strictly because we have only two resolutions and I believe we will, uh, pass this as much as possible as... Kasi dalawalan na titira dito para maka-move forward na dayo. If there is no more legislation...
It's only 10 minutes, uh, majority to learn it.
Okay, uh, we will grant the 10 minutes, uh, suspension.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we have two remaining resolutions, Mr. Speaker. We start with the resolution number 399. Resolution commending the ASA Philippines Foundation, Inc. for Islamic Financing Sharia Compliant Programs in the Bangsa-Moro. Uh, Mr. Speaker, if the proponent of the bill would like to, uh, share lights of this proposed resolution, uh, he may do so, Mr. Speaker. May we respectfully recognize MP, uh, Rasul Maitmog, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, MP, we now tackle proposed resolution 399.
MP Rasul Maitmog.
We, we recognize the principal author, MP Rashmit Mog.
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh, we're, the resolution is a resolution commending the ASA Philippines Foundation, Incorporated, for Islamic Finanzaria Compliant Programs in the Philippines. Uh, the ASA Philippines Foundation, Mr. Speaker. The acronym ASA is not actually an acronym. It's the translation of the, uh, uh, of the word, uh, from the, from the original word, which means hope. Uh, it's similar to us, Mr. Speaker, na, it means pagasa. So, Mr. Speaker, the good thing with the ASA Foundation, Mr. Speaker, is they're, they're the only foundation in the Philippines that offers Islamic microfinance because, uh, they have a Sharia board. Uh, most of the, most of the, uh, foundations in the Philippines that offers, uh, microfinancing, uh, it's more of a microfinance, uh, which is, uh, uh, not fully halal certified, but, but it is allowed. Uh, with the ASA Philippines, Mr. Speaker, they are, uh, present in the Bangsa-Moro area and in the Bangsa-Moro area, they really help in Marawi City and they help in the other areas of the, of the farm. Uh, right now, Mr. Speaker, their president is a Muslim. Out of their, uh, of their, out of their programs, Mr. Speaker, at least one percent of that is dedicated to microfinance, uh, with a Sharia compliant board. Uh, the part, the board members of ASA Philippines, Mr. Speaker, uh, the members here are, um, Mike, uh, Mike Ibrahim, uh, Ustaz Mike Ibrahim, uh, uh, Dr. Jolki Pliwadi and, uh, uh, Professor Sadain, Mr. Speaker, uh, Attorney Professor Sadain. So, with this, Mr. Speaker, with their great contribution to the Bangsa-Moro area, we would like to provide them some commendation because based on the, uh, BOL, one of the, one of the, uh, focus of the BOL is that the Bangsa-Moro will promote, Islamic, uh, compliant, uh, Sharia programs, especially for economics, Mr. Speaker. So, hoping that, uh, some of you have met them yesterday. Uh, we are hoping that, uh, this commendation will pass, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, I move to open the period of debate. If there is none, Mr. Speaker, I...
A period of interpretation and debate is, uh, open. I see no...
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, MP Zia, so we follow by MP Zia, Mr. Speaker.
MP Deputy Speaker Zia Adyong to be followed by...
MP Maisara Latif.
MP Maisara. MP Zia is recognized.
In the spirit of the International Women's Day, I will, uh, give way to the good lady of Taraka, Taraka, MP Maisara Dambamon Latif, Mrs. Speaker.
MP Maisara Dambamon Latif is recognized.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Actually, I am from Tugaya, so Taraka is for MP Jamila Disimban Ramos, Mr. Speaker. Uh, anyway, yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh, my question would be for interpretation is, what is the status of Islamic finance in the Bangsa-Moro as of today? If it's only the ASA who is, uh, the one operating? Do we have, uh, any other institution like ASA in the Bangsa-Moro, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, as to microfinance, definitely it will be the, uh, Al Amana Islamic Bank, which is the forerunner. However, for private institutions, Mr. Speaker, it is the ASA which has, uh, their own Sharia board. Uh, but they're hoping that eventually the farm will, will, uh, organize its Sharia board so that they can be compliant with the farm Sharia board, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, in relation to that, may we ask, what is the representation's statement that the Bangsa-Moro government may organize its own Sharia board? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, the, o- one of the failings of, uh, most, uh, Sharia practicing, uh, companies here is that, uh, there's a lack of Sharia board. So, right now, uh, it is the ASA that has, uh, that established their Sharia board. But they believe that, uh, who, uh, eventually the farm will have its own Sharia board. So, they're actually waiting that the farm, because it says here under section thirty-two, article twelve of the BOL, that the Bangsa-Moro government to promote development of Islamic banking and finance system, uh, including the promotion and development of Sharia compliance financing institution in the region. Uh, for any financing institution which is Sharia compliant to be present in the region, Mr. Speaker. Uh, one of the main component or elements needed is a Sharia board.
Mr. Speaker, I ask that because as one of the framers during the Bangsa-Moro Organic Loss, uh, passage, we asked that the Sharia board be constituted by private entities. But it is the Bangsa-Moro government who will issue the necessary guidelines in accordance with the banks, with the Banco Central's, uh, directive also. So, it is really the private institutions in the Bangsa-Moro who shall constitute their own Sharia board and not the Bangsa-Moro government, Mr. Speaker. Am I correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, that's why for the meantime, Mr. Speaker, uh, they're waiting for the requirements from the Bangsa-Moro area. Uh, but for the meantime that there's none, uh, they establish their Sharia board so that they can fully function as a Sharia compliance system, Mr. Uh, your, uh, Mr. Speaker.
So, Mr. Speaker, may I also make a manifestation that I be a co-author in this proposed resolution? And at the same time, Mr. Speaker, may I also commend the ASA for their, uh, very, for, uh, what you call this, very forward-thinking, uh, institution in terms of establishing a Sharia board? And may I also ask the ASA to help us when we craft the guidelines for Sharia board in the future, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, uh, we welcome the, uh, we welcome the request of MP Maisara, Mr. Speaker, and, uh, and her suggestions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And, uh, for the information of this honorable body, the Banco Central of the, of the, of the Philippines has already issued a guideline for the Bangsa-Moro government to start preparing already the necessary mechanisms, tools and processes for the full implementation of Sharia and Islamic financing, uh, compliant products and programs in the Bangsa-Moro. So, we look forward, Mr. Speaker, to any member of the parliament to collaborate on this, especially the government of the day to spearhead the immediate passage of necessary legislation to implement the provisions of the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law on Sharia-compliant products, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
MP Zia? We follow the MP Jose Lorena.
Is recognized. And then MP Eddie Ali and, uh, the Deputy Min- Deputy Minister Joel Lorena, Deputy Speaker Omar Semah. Di ko makita yun.
Mr. Speaker? Yes, Mrs. Speaker, I, uh, thank you for the recognition. Mrs. Speaker, I will no longer ask questions to the proponent. I will just have to ride on with the...
James Makaraya.
Yes, I will yield to the gentleman, the Deputy Minister, uh, Attorney Lorena. We have the same, we have the same questions.
Can you just abbreviate your, uh... This is a resolution commending. Can we just abbreviate the questioning with all due respect? Am I recognized, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, uh, my best friend. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. While I load the activities of ASA, I just have to be moving from a point of caution. Uh, this is supposed to be an investment house. An investment house, we succeed and we fail. By this commendation, Mr. Speaker, we might be endorsing and effectively ASA. The consequence of failure might be also attributed to us and might affect the integrity of the parliament. So, my caution is, although I have not really seen the activity of ASA, but in the current situation where there are fraudulent transactions emanating from Investment House, I do not like to be associated with any endorsement for one particular investment activity. That is my concern, although I am not saying that that is the activity of ASA. My other worry is, have you been relating to the central bank, particularly the area of Islamic finance under, uh, Director Allauya? So that we will be approached, uh, like we can verify and we can appreciate correctly the kind of investment that is put forward. So, may I ask if our... So may I ask if our proponent has some knowledge of that, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, um, well, from the track record of Asa, what we see is that, uh, there's actually compliance with the BSP because you can't do this, uh, transaction if you don't have the, um, uh, the rules, if you don't follow the rules and regulation of BSP. And based on our, based on the record, Mr. Speaker, the Islamic financing of Asa is actually beneficial to our people because it seems that, uh, there's a notion in the Bangsa-Mura area that our people are not good clients for loans. But it seems here, Mr. Speaker, that based on the records of Asa, 99.9% are actually loanable, uh, meaning what, what is lacking from the, from the, uh, from our, uh, financial institutions is trust from our people. Uh, it is Asa who is one of those, uh, one of those financial institution, uh, which follows Sharia board, uh, that is present in our area that is providing these services, Mr. Speaker. Uh, there is none other.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you, proponent. Uh, perhaps before we look into the resolution, the ample track record of any organization would be appended to any resolution for us to properly appreciate. Because, uh, with all due respect and without malice intended, there are viable financing institution which crumble at certain point in time. And when investigations ripen, even those people who endorse are attributable to that kind of a failure. And in an institution like us, an invalid institution of the parliament, we just recognize and which in effect I would endorse, an institution involved, whether it is Islamic finance or otherwise, in financing under a circumstance where we are not in control of a particular environment and neither do we have ample regulations, then the possibility of failure may happen. I am not saying it will happen to Asa, may happen. And if there are investors that has been attached to it and there are various complaint, records will bear out that the parliament has appropriately endorsed such an institution. And having said that, that might even imply that we have marketed Asa, whether it is correctly, correctly, uh, correct or wrong, and therefore the parliament might even be, and it may be put in a perspective that may not be good. So that is just a word of caution and I hope, uh, there would be more detail, but we appreciate Asa's effort to bring in Islamic finance. Uh, when we talk Islamic finance, we also speak of, uh, uh, Islamic insurance. May I know if the investment of Asa is appropriately, uh, covered Islamic insurance?
Uh, there's no Islamic insurance yet in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker. Uh, what they are offering is those, uh, allowed by the PSP and for the meantime, they're allowed the microfinancing loan.
Well, I may admit to that, that Islamic Takapol Islam is not yet found in the Philippines, but I know that May Bank, which is a Malaysian investment house, has afforded the Takapol Islam in the Philippines as a window. So may I know if they have a bid of the Takapol Islam window for purposes of insurance?
Uh, their function, uh, their purpose in the Islamic finance, Mr. Speaker, uh, is limited to the microfinance and I don't think it's, uh, related to the, uh, insurance. They don't have insurance, uh, uh, insurance commodity as, uh, as, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, but, uh, any investment, any Islamic finance investment is associated always with a guarantee. And guarantee in the light of Islamic finance is called Takapol. Incidentally, I was one of the principal authors when we did for PDI, the Takapol Islam with the President now of Omanah Bank. And our problem is, investment house in the Philippines have not secured a Takapol, uh, clearance, both from Malaysia or from Malaysian investment house. So that is a problem that I, I can adventure on. Nonetheless, again, as you said, I do not like to question the integrity of Asa, neither do I want to attribute malice, but I just want to maintain in the safer side of caution because any failure of a, of an investment that may come about, which is not intended, may even be attributable for, to the, uh, to the parliament. So that is just a word of caution. Again, I thank you, Mr. Proponent, for the enlightenment. I hope we will be given more information about Asa's transaction and even the profile of the business and the management of the funds of Asa so that we can be assured that there is full proof protection for the investment that will be put about in, in that it will not affect the constituency of the bar and will not imply any wrongdoing to the parliament by recognizing which would come about like an endorsement for one particular investment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Truly noted. Deputy Speaker Omar Semah?
Yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, I would like just to, uh, ask one question from the proponent, but before that, I am signifying my objection to, uh, the, this resolution, Mr. Speaker.
Noted.
Yeah, because the, the, the act of commending, uh, a financial institution, uh, would closely amount to a, uh, to an act of sovereign guarantee, uh, Mr. Speaker. And that would have implications on the, on the, on this institution, the Bangsa-Mura Transition Authority, Mr. Speaker. Uh, I'm saying this because I believe that, uh, uh, all institutions, all financial institutions, uh, are not fully funded and therefore they would acqui- they would acquire funding through loans and giving them a commendation would, they, institutions, uh, for that matter, without any malice or, uh, or derogation to the Asa Philippines, is that, uh, it would amount to a guarantee. If the moment they file, uh, loans to financial institutions and they attach the commendation we have given them, that would amount to, uh, sort of sovereign guarantee and which we cannot, uh, we cannot, uh, allow to happen here. Nonetheless, Mr. Speaker, my question is, uh, can the proponent come here and, uh, I mean, present more, uh, as to the, uh, to the character, to the credibility of the, of this Asa? Maybe we can, we can defer this deliberation here and allow the proponent to make presentations as to the, uh, you know, activities of Asa. And of course, uh, of course, we are not requiring you to present the financial status of this, uh, organization. Uh, that is just my, uh, question, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the representatives of Asa was actually here yesterday, uh, because the, the agenda was yesterday. Uh, I think they're not here today, but, uh, they're here? Uh, they're here today, Mr. Speaker. Uh, they're also waiting for the, uh, hoping, uh, for the commendation because right now they're, uh, they're the only, uh, microfinancing, uh, microfinance institution practicing Sharia, not only in the bar but in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Speaker, that, that, that is all, Mr. Speaker. Again, may I re- may I reiterate my objection to this resolution? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, MP Edi Ali to be followed by MP, eh, MP Paisari Tagu and MP Ali Saki in the Zoom, MP Muslini Lidason and MP Jamila Ramos.
MP Edi Ali is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Is the proponent willing to respond to some clarificatory questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Like the other, uh, colleagues, I would say that giving a commendation to the Asa Philippine Foundation Incorporated by this august body is tantamount to endorsing, um, the activity or the programs of Asa Foundation Incorporated. Am I correct in my understanding that saying that Asa Philippines is Sharia compliant because they have the Sharia board? It is not an outside institution that, uh, certifies that it's, that it is Sharia compliant?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, one of the requirements for practicing Sharia compliance in the Philippines is that, uh, you have a Sharia board, even in the international, uh, Islamic financing, Mr. Speaker, uh, you need a Sharia board. Then the members of the Asa Sharia board are Ustaz Mike Ibrahim. Uh, he's currently our deputy, uh, minister for, I think, uh, executive director of the Housing, Ministry of Housing, uh, Attorney Sadain and, uh, Dr. Jolki Pliwadi, Mr. Speaker.
So am I right, Mr., uh, Mr. Speaker, that it is the Sharia board of, of the Asa Philippine Foundation? It is not from outside? It is an outside institution?
It's not an outside institution, Mr. Speaker. It's a local, uh, headed by Islamic scholars or, uh, learned, learned men of Islam in the Philippines. Some of them have, uh, uh, a foundation on Sharia and a foundation on Islamic, uh, on a foundation on finance. And, um, they're, they're local, Mr. Speaker. Uh, one of the functions of the Sharia board is actually to check whether the, the, the practices and the component of the whole loan system is actually halal, Mr. Speaker.
My reaction to that, Mr. Speaker, it takes an outside institution or agency to certify that it is such because if the one certifying is part of the institution, then I would say that, you know, I, like the other members of the parliament, I have my own reservation to, you know, to, to pass this, uh, uh, resolution. Mr. Speaker, I'm an advocate of microfinance. I've been in NGO since 1980s and partly while there was, there was no institution that, uh, that certifies that, that our NGO practices Islamic, uh, I mean, uh, Sharia compliant, it is just our own. You know, we have also ustaz being members of the overall foundation, but, uh, my point, Mr. Speaker, it requires another, another certifying institution to, to, to give that, uh, Sharia compliance. Now, it is mentioned in the resolution that the income of the Asa is used for its programs and partly it is Islamic microfinance. My question, Mr. Speaker, is the income of Asa Philippines all come from Islamic microfinance? Is the income of the Asa Foundation come from the Islamic microfinance or they have other programs which may not be Islamic?
Uh, the main program that they focuses on the bar area, Mr. Speaker, is their Islamic Finance Program. Uh, that's where they get the income from that, they invest through their CSR back to our communities.
I'm asking that, Mr. Speaker, because if the income from the other sources is not Islamic, then using it for Islamic program, then there is that question, Mr. Speaker. It is on this ground, Mr. Speaker, that I am not endorsing, or I'm opposed to this commendation at this point in time without the rules and regulations that the Bangsa-Mura will have on microfinance. With that, uh, Mr. Speaker, with the explanation of the proponent, that, uh, not all the income, I would say, I, I would assume, Mr. Speaker?
Um, Mr. Speaker, the Asa has a very big, um, loan program, but the loan program that they have in bar is mainly Islamic finance and the income that they get from that Islamic finance program is the one that they reinvest for CSR in the bar area. It's, uh, separate from the other programs that they have.
Mr. Speaker, I made to understand that when they started, when they started Islamic microfinance, where this, the source come from? Is it from Islamic activity or programs or did it come from other sources of income of the Asa Philippine Foundation?
Uh, the Asa, the Asa Foundation, Mr. Speaker, has a very big program and, uh, their president is actually Muslim and they wanted to help the Muslims in this country. So they created the Islamic financing program, the microfinancing program in the, in the Philippines. And one of their challenges was there was no Sharia board, uh, in the Philippines. So they invested so that there will be scholars that will help them, uh, to identify halal and haram programs that are Sharia compliant so that, that is why they were able to practice, uh, if microfinance, uh, based on Sharia principles in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, is the proponent aware that the, that the initial investment for the Islamic microfinance come from Islamic activities or Islamic programs?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that's why they have the Sharia board so that no haram or no hal- no, no halal, uh, no haram, no haram money will be part of the Islamic finance program, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, do we have the assurance that the initial, the initial amount used for Islamic microfinance come from Islamic activities?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that's the reason why they, before they started their Islamic financing program, they really started it with a Sharia board so that they will be guided, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Um, Mr. Speaker, I would like to inform this august body that it's ready five o'clock in the afternoon. As much as possible, we can, uh, defer first consideration, defer consideration of the proposed resolution number, uh, depend at, yes, defer consideration of 399, yes, until, until, uh, uh, the next, uh, session, Mr. Speaker.
What is the pleasure of the majority leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I, uh, yeah, I move, I move to defer first the proposed consid- consideration of proposed resolution number 399.
Okay. Uh, there is a motion to defer, uh, consideration of the proposed resolution, uh, uh, 399 and jurisprud葛den, is there any objection? Same here is none, same is hereby approved. Next.
Five minutes lang.
I defer the nothing.
Five minutes lang.
Next, majority leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we proceed to the next proposed resolution.
Um, Mr. Speaker, I think the topic is very important.
What is the pleasure of, uh, the gentleman, uh, Ali Saki?
My pleasure is to share some ideas. This is very important. We are talking about Islamic banking and this is a product, Islamic banking or Alamanah Bank is a product of the struggle of the Bangsa-Mura. And now we are trying, we are discussing about Islamic banking.
We will, we will continue deliberating on this resolution.
Yes, yes, uh, because I'm just answering this.
Can you just, can you just, uh, reserve your thoughts? I know your expertise on this.
Yes, I just-
And, uh, I hope you understand that we, we need to, uh-
I, I just, Mr. Speaker, I just like to put on record my apprehension, my strong apprehension in issuing this, uh, sort of resolution commending-
You will have your time.
Commending this, uh, Asa.
We note that, noted, noted.
I just like to put on record certain points.
Yes, yes, and you will have your time in-
Just five minutes, one minute.
One minute, okay, one minute.
I just like-
We consider your plea for one minute.
Yes, but this is very important to me because I must point out here that I was- Yes, but this is very important to me because I must point out here that I was the last chairman of Amanah Bank from two thousand five to two thousand seven. I was able to stop the bleeding of Amanah Bank. And I know a lot about Islamic banking since I was also a chairman. I was able to stop the bleeding of the bank and that I even filed a case against DVP for taking over Amanah Bank. And that precisely the reason why I am so enthusiastic in making this observation that this resolution commending this ASA Philippine Foundation, mentioning that they have been here for the past sixteen years. From two thousand five to present, two thousand twenty-one, it's already sixteen years. And I have never heard of this ASA Foundation during this time in my chairmanship of the Amanah Bank. So I would like to talk further about this issue when we will resume talking about Amanah Bank. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The resolution is hereby deferred.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we proceed to the next resolution, proposed resolution number four zero eight. I think this is only, Mr. Speaker, I uh recognition of the celebration of the International Women's Day on March eighth, two thousand twenty-one and commending the economic, cultural and political achievements of women in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimidanaw. This has been celebrated last week. I believe, Mr. Speaker, there is no more uh room for this discussion of this proposed resolution, Mr. Speaker. The proponent of the resolution would like to approve immediately this.
I agree, Mr. Speaker, that we should uh approve this uh resolution.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, I move for the approval. I move for the approval and adoption of this resolution.
Resolution four zero eight?
Yes, four zero eight, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve resolution four zero eight. Now, and Julie seconded, I hear no objection, there are any objection, there being none, same is hereby approved.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, subject to stand.
Oh, turn your. Is there any motion to adjourn?
Yes, uh, proposed resolution number four zero seven. This is in relation to the National Hijab Day, Mr. Speaker. Celebrate, uh, proposed resolution number four zero seven.
Number?
Four zero seven.
Okay, three nine nine.
A resolution expressing support. May we uh defer this until the next session? We can approve. I surrender for Mr. Speaker upon consultation with the proponent of the.
Mr. Speaker, uh Mr. Speaker, just like with the celebration of the Women's Month, Mr. Speaker, this is in line with that, Mr. Speaker. I guess we should proceed with the discussion, Mr. Speaker. Uh, if the gentleman of this uh assembly is supportive of the celebration of the hijab and therefore we should pass this today.
Mr. Speaker, may I be recognized?
Yes, MP Maisara Latif, Mr. Speaker. I I open, I move, I move to open the period of debate, interpretation and proposed resolution number four seven.
Interpretation and debate on proposed resolution four zero seven is now open. MP Maisara Dangdangul Latif is recognized.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I also filed a similar resolution, Mr. Speaker. Uh, so if if it's possible that the similar resolution be consolidated and if not, I just move that this resolution, proposed resolution be immediately uh approved by this honorable body and my co-authorship be included in this proposed resolution, Mr. Speaker.
The principal proponent accept?
Yeah, we accept, Mr. Speaker. Those who wants to be co-author of this proposed resolution.
MP.
MP Paisalin Tago.
MP Paisalin Tago is recognized, deputy majority leader.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Speaker. Uh, similarly, Mr. Speaker, I have a resolution regarding hijab, but uh different tender, Mr. Speaker. But uh, Mr. Speaker, I have uh questions to the proponent of the mission, if they allow, Mr. Speaker.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Yes. The resolution speaks of declaring the first day of February of every year as National Hijab Day. Is the National Hijab Day, is the intention of the proponent, Mr. Speaker, is to declare the first day of February uh as a national holiday during the Hijab Day or Bangsa Moro Day?
It's not a holiday, but it's a celebration um in the Philippines and in entire the world. International.
International uh hijab. So everybody in the Bangsa Moro.
Everybody is encouraged to wear hijab. Every woman, wo- woman is encouraged to ev- every woman is encouraged to wear hijab, be it Muslim or non-Muslim.
On February.
Campaign, actually.
On on February.
On the first day of February.
On the first day of February. My worry, Mr. Speaker, is that are we going to wear only the hijab during uh February because uh as as Muslim, uh, Mr. Speaker, um, Bangsa Moro women should wear uh hijab all the time, Mr. Speaker. So that's my worry with this uh resolution, Mr. Speaker.
Now, Mr. Speaker, this is intended for those uh who do not know the meaning of this hijab, though the discriminations that are being attached to wearing a hijab, this is an opportunity for them to understand what really is in it in wearing the hijab for that, especially for the non-Muslims.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, because uh when the Senate bill and House bill was uh discussed in the House, Mr. Speaker, there was a discussion among the ulama. I am not a dullama, Mr. Speaker. And uh for them, I heard from some respected ulama that uh declaring an hijab day for them is uh bida. Uh, I don't know what's that matter because I had not level recorded, so it's for the ulama sake for uh to understand. Because for me, uh, in the Bangsa Moro, uh, we should have a policy that the hijab should be uh uh encouraged to all Bangsa Moro women to wear hijab, not only on the Hijab Day but throughout the seasons, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, um, our bigger um bigger audience here is not actually the the women of Bangsa Moro, but the outside world, Mr. Uh, Mr. Speaker. Um, considering that uh there are several issues that are attached to wearing a hijab. And uh the day that uh we declare uh based on the the title of the the resolution, Mr. Speaker, it is actually this proposed resolution will actually trigger the uh already approved uh uh House Bill eighty-two forty-nine and uh the pending Senate Bill uh twenty-eighty-one uh which actually uh declares first day of February of every year. Uh, Mr. Speaker, um, this is not actually intended for us as Muslim women. It's intended for the general public to really understand the the meaning of having or he or wearing this hijab, Mr. Speaker. Uh, if I may may read uh the uh uh story of the founder of uh this uh Hijab Day who is Nasma Khan uh from uh from uh New York. Uh, and I quote in a in a source coming from uh the uh um web page, no, where hijabday.com uh our history. Um, there's a portion here, Mr. Speaker, that says, "Growing up in Bronx in New York City, I experienced a great deal of discrimination due to my hijab." She reflects. "In middle of uh in middle school, I was Batman or ninja. When I entered university after nine eleven, I was called Osama bin Laden or terrorist. It was awful. I figured the only way to end discrimination is if we are as our fellow sisters to experience hijabs themselves." So uh dito nag simula itong istorya na ito na talagang uh hirap, no? Lalo na yung nasa abroad, no? Uh, in this case, nasa New York sila. So yung naka-attach doon na na biases in wearing our hijab. So ito yung gusto natin na palaganapin. It's an advocacy actually to the entire uh country for Muslims and non-Muslims to to really respect or to really uh observe this day.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, Mr. Speaker, after seeing the so many hands of the MPs, Mr. Speaker, this will uh again bring us to the night uh and considering it is already past five, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I would like to know if those who are in line here because I I know that
And those in line, Mr. Speaker, are the una mas.
They just want to co-author, Mr. Speaker. May may I know if those who want to co-author? This is this is the ano, actually nag tumayo lang sila para mag-co-author.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. With respect to co-authorship, Mr. Speaker, they can approach the uh secretary general, the MPs, Mr. Speaker, but uh again, Mr. Speaker, we have still a session next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We can further discuss this, Mr. Speaker. We will give consideration of this, Mr. Speaker, so therefore I move to defer the discussion of this particular bill, Mr. Speaker. A particular resolution, Mr. Speaker.
So what do you suggest, majority floor leader?
I move to defer uh discussion.
There is a motion to defer consideration uh of this bill. Any second? Julie seconded. Any objection? Chair here is none, same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn this session until next Tuesday.
Session is adjourned until the next.
Next week.